Hi, Mike. Could you see if Todd is right or anything?
It's an illustrious crowd.
Yeah. As soon as Todd walks in, we're ready to roll. What is Todd doing? Hey, Adam. Do you know where Todd is? Do you know where Todd is? Okay, here he comes. Okay, we're gonna get started. Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me in the back, Cindy? Can you hear me? How's our audio in the back?
Good.
It's better?
Awesome.
Is that Danya? Uh, Danya? Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Izzy Patoka. I'm Chair of the Baltimore County Council. We're just gonna quickly go around the room and start with Councilman Young.
Councilman Young, representing District 1.
I'm Wade Kacz. I represent District 3.
I'm Councilman Julian Jones, District 4. I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Councilman David Marks, District 5.
Councilman Mike Hurtel, District 6. Thanks for coming out tonight. This looks like a historic crowd.
Yes. And Councilman Crandall, you're just in time to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out for such a historic event tonight in Towson.
So, again, good evening, everyone. If you look around the room and look at the person next to you, you'll see this is what civic engagement is all about. So, thank you all for being here this evening. Before we get started, I just wanna introduce an intern who started today. He's part of the Second District Mod Squad, and that's Kylan Jackson. Kylan, if you would, raise your hand. Kylan, you know, no one's got that kind of applause before. Wow. So, Kylan is a freshman at Milford Mill High School, and he's gonna learn the ropes of politics in our office. So, we wish you well, Kylan. Okay, we had a little bit of a mix-up earlier today. We had our 2:00 work session, and ordinarily, it's 4:00. So, we had one or two people that signed up for the 2:00 but thought it was gonna be a 4:00. So, it's just really, I think, one person here, and that's Ray Hile. Ray, come on up. You're good? Okay, thank you for respecting that. This public hearing of the Baltimore County Council will now come to order. The council is holding this public hearing because we wanna hear from county residents on what they believe are the desired qualifications for the office of county executive. The county charter requires my council colleagues and I to elect the person who will serve as the next county executive for the remainder of the current term of office, and we are interested in your feedback. Please keep in mind that this is the only subject of tonight's hearing. This is not a candidate forum, and we are not looking for testimony regarding a specific candidate or any other person. We wanna hear your thoughts about the qualifications for an interim county executive. Having said that, we invite you all to speak and tell us what is on your mind related to the county executive search. We hope everyone attending will respect this process and the views that will be expressed. I will now read the rules of procedure for this public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak should have registered using the online speaker registration form at the website. And I'm just gonna ad lib here. We have a couple of folks that came and signed up late this evening, and they're being put on a wait list, and we'll see how it goes, 'cause we've got 70-some speakers this evening. Yeah, I'm getting there. Each speaker will be limited to 2 minutes. Please note that there's a clock on the video monitors that'll be displayed, that will display the remaining time as you speak. When your time has expired, we ask that you conclude your remarks immediately. We have many speakers registered, and the purpose of the time limitation is not, is to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to address us tonight. When a speaker is, a name is called, the next name of the next speak, the name of the next speaker will also be called. The person who is on deck is asked to come forward and be seated near the front, or be at their computer if they're participating virtually prepared to speak. Ms. Bel Castro will announce speakers, and so, just wanna, usually, those of you that have been here before know that typically, we go to, we have 3 minutes per person. This evening, we've got really an awesome level of participation where we have 70-some speakers, so we're gonna limit it to 2. Appreciate everybody coming here tonight. Just try to be respectful of the time and for others that are here. So, we're gonna begin. Is everybody ready to begin? Okay. Listen, if you're ready to begin, we're gonna try a, an activity that brings us together. If you're ready to begin, I would ask you to join us. We're gonna do a one clap applause for everybody here. So, how we're gonna do this is, I'm gonna count to 3, and when I get to 3, everybody clap just once, not multiple times. You guys ready for this? Okay. 1, 2, 3. Excellent. You guys are ready for primetime. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, please call the first 2 speakers.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Caitlin Clem Kelner, followed by Monia Jamal.
Okay, Ms. Clem Kelner, you know your way around here, but we're gonna speak from this mic.
We're gonna speak up here tonight. Good evening, and thank you so much, Chairman, and Councilman Hurtel, and the rest of the county council. For the record, my name is Caitlin Clem Kelner. I am a community leader and activist in the 6th District and a lifelong multi-generational resident of Overly-Fulerton. When I think about the qualifications that I want for a county executive, I want someone that's going to take County Executive Olshesky's vision that he was elected to do and take that ball and run with it for the next 18 months. I want someone who is committed to advancing for an open and transparent government. I want someone that's going to support the office of the Inspector General. I want someone that's going to continue the level of community engagement that is currently happening from the county executive's office. That means continuing the budget town halls. That also means continuing to host things like the Community Leader Summit in September that has been happening recently. I have not seen this level of engagement from the county executive's office in my lifetime. As a community leader, that is something that I value and I cherish, and I want somebody to take that ball and run with it. As an East Side leader, I want someone who is focused on the attention that the East Side needs. Oftentimes, you've heard me testify that I have felt like that area has been forgotten, as do the other residents of that area. We are in the process of forming an umbrella group for that community, and we want someone that can be a partner with us. We want someone that is a cheerleader for the East Side, and we want somebody that is going to stand there hand-in-hand with us and our issues. So, my time is cut short, 'cause I really thought that I had 3 minutes. I will send you all a letter as well, but I really strongly hope that you take that into consideration, and I hope that you are asking specific questions about what they, what these candidates would like to do for your particular district, and please share it with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Clem Kelner. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, and the one that follows us.
Next speaker is, and I apologize in advance for pronouncing anyone's name wrong, Monia Jamal, followed by Jyoti Mohan.
Good evening, council members. My representative, Councilman Kacz, and attendees, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Monia Jamal, and I live in Timonium, Lutherville, Timonium, and my kids attend Timonium Elementary School. And soon, hopefully, they will attend a new Dulany High School, to which I'm very grateful to my representative and all the advocates that worked so tirelessly to bring this project to life. You see, education is very important matter to me, very close to my heart, being an educator myself. I'm a physics teacher at the Bryn Mawr School, and this way, I see firsthand the transformative effect that education has on shaping young minds and building a bright future. So, I, that's why I strongly believe in a representative who really believes in education, prioritizes education, and gives the children a very fair opportunity to meet their potential and with an education that's available to everyone. As an immigrant, a new American, and a mother of a young girl who is a first-generation American, I want my daughter to grow up with leaders who inspire her, leaders who understand the complexity and the unique challenges and opportunities that are challenging for immigrant families and for first-generation Americans. I want her to see a role model in our county executive, someone who serves the community with compassion, fights poverty with determination, and who ensures food security for every family, hard-working family. These are the qualities that I hope to see in my council leadership. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Jamal. Ms. Bel Castro, the next 2 speakers.
Next speaker is Jyoti Mohan, followed by Donald Hutchinson.
Good evening, Chair. I'm not sure if you've noticed, Chairman Patoka, but the county is dynamic and growing. I'm not looking over there, I'm looking down here, and I'm seeing a very diverse sea of faces. Each year, thousands of new Americans choose to make Baltimore County their home, contributing to our workforce, communities, and to our tax coffers. New Americans contribute in wonderful ways, but they also have specific challenges in settling into life in the county. We need someone who hails from a background that can comprehend the diversity of voices and needs of new Americans. We need someone who is shaped by their personal and family background as an immigrant. And I'll keep it short.
Thank you, Jyoti. Former county executive, Don Hutchinson, it's an honor to have you here, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. My name is Don Hutchinson, and I'm the former county executive of Baltimore County, serving, starting when I was 32 years old, from 1978 to 1986. I was the first county executive to be elected for 2 terms, not the first to be elected, but to serve 2 terms. And this is, this is an historic moment for a couple of different reasons. This is the 70th year of charter government minus 2. But in 1954, it was then that a charter commission established the boundaries of what a county government should look like. And the first county executive was actually not appointed as county executive. He was the former chair of the county commissioners, and he automatically became county executive. His name was Mike Birmingham, or better known as Iron Mike Birmingham, Iron Mike Birmingham from Dundalk. I live in Timonium. I've lived here for all of my entire life, except for the few years that I lived in Baltimore City. And there are a couple or 3 things that I think that we ought to be looking for when we're looking for a county executive. I think we need to understand that the executive has to understand the difference, and not the difference, but the conflict between the Erdol line and next, and next growth, next development in the county. The Erdol line was created in the early 1960s with great foresight, terrific foresight, and it has put the county in a position of being one of the best counties in the country in land preservation. But with that, we've created a struggle for economic development and economic growth. That struggle, 75% of the people in Baltimore County live around, within 5 to 7 miles of the Baltimore Beltway. The Erdol line protects about 46, 47% of the landmass of Baltimore County. The county is declining in growth, and it needs new jobs and new job creation. To understand the difference in providing for protection of the green spaces of Baltimore County, the responsibility of protecting the water supply of 2 million people plays against the need for opportunities for new growth and new development. Second thought, the next county executive immediately becomes a lame duck county executive. Immediately becomes a lame duck county executive. I know what it is to start a new administration, and I know what it is to end an administration. I know what it is to be a lame duck. I know what it is and how long it took to create an administration. The reality is that the next county executive must be someone who understands what it means to work with governmental employees. It's the governmental employees that are gonna determine the success or failures of the county. It's gonna be the people who replace the people who quit because there's a new county executive. It's gonna be the deputy directors. It's gonna be the division chiefs. It's gonna be the people who have to have a rapport with the county executive. The county executives that have failed in this county, and there have been more than 1, the county executives that have failed in this county are the county executives who had no sense of what it meant to have the county employees want to be a part of the government, want to be a part of the decision-making process, and want to be a part of the efficiency of the government itself. If that person cannot relate to the county employee, the person will not be a success, and this is not a caretaker job. Only 3 county executives have served 2 full terms, only 3. 5 have been elected to 2 terms, only 3 have finished their terms. The average term of a county executive is 5 years. That's the average term of the county executives that we've had. And the county executives must understand that lame duckery is a reality. Some delay it, some don't. Those that are able to delay it, they're the ones that are gonna be effective and efficient. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, county executive. Ms. Bel Castro, our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Tom Quark, followed by Scott Schellenberger.
And we have former county councilman from the 1st District, Tom Quark.
Good evening. Let me get this going here. Used to be on the other side of the desk here. It's great to see everybody. My name's Tom Quark. I used to be councilman for District 1. Baltimore County, it's at a crossroads over the next few years. The county faces significant challenges attempting to fund our operating capital budgets adequately. Fiscal year 2026 will most likely be manageable, but I believe fiscal year 2027 will require difficult decisions on tax-based revenues versus capital allocation and deployment. On the operating front, the recent inflation spike has caused significant wage pressures as the county competes for scarce labor resources. Wage increases in the demand for labor also puts pressure on overall pension funding status, which is too low at only 59%. This is an unfunded liability. If we want the best teachers, police, firefighters, and government workers, we need to make sure that they are compensated fairly and competitively versus other government and private sector employers. We also need to monitor and commensurately fund the pension. In regard to the capital budget, our infrastructure is aging, and we have seemingly an unlimited need for borrowing capital to simply keep up with pressing obligations. Major capital projects such as the new Dulany and Towson High Schools, roads, libraries, police stations, fire stations, and many other capital needs are pressing. These pressures make our debt service cost, you know, payments to service obviously our debt and interest, higher, and soon, we'll exceed our current spending affordability guidelines. That's definitely a red flag we need to really watch out for. Our overall tax base is simply not sufficient to meet the incredible capital needs due to aging infrastructure and an inflation-adjusted wage base. New and urgent measures need to be considered in how to increase our tax base. Aside from difficult tax increases, I urge you to consider fast-tracking revitalization of older commercial corridors and to attract promising new businesses, such as the wonderful companies create, being created because of artificial intelligence. Baltimore County's population is declining the last several years, as all of you know. Let us hope that the overall population continues to grow. Otherwise, important assumptions built into our economic modeling may need to be reconsidered. Baltimore County needs to grow upwards, literally, while making sure we don't continue to overcrowd our schools. Many departments need resources and continued support. For example, our Baltimore County Police Department currently has over 270 vacancies, with several hundred more police expected to retire in the next 1 and 1/2 years. Is there anything more important than public safety for our residents? Storm clouds are emerging for Baltimore County. If the right decisions are not made in the next 2 years, I'm concerned Baltimore County might be in jeopardy of losing our coveted AAA bond rating. The Baltimore County Council cannot simply select a placeholder for our next executive. The council needs to select the best applicant regardless of if they want to run 2 years from now or not. The decision should be placed on who's best qualified to lead during very difficult and challenging times. This is simply too much at stake for short-term politics to win the day over the long-term health of our county. The citizens deserve no less than our best efforts. Thank you all very much. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we have our state's attorney, Scott Schellenberger.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for giving us this time. Please, take a look at my written testimony that I submitted earlier today. It's very interesting that I'm following Councilman Quark, who talked about public safety, 'cause you can imagine that that's the thing that I care about the most. While certainly our school system is a big factor in this job, you have to remember the school system, on a daily basis, is run by a superintendent and a school board. They are working on all that together. It is the county executive who must look after public safety. I can't tell you how many times I've looked out my window at the courthouse building and looked down and seen the police chiefs walking into the building to meet with the county executive. It happens all the time, and that's not all. I have met with the county executive, the police chief, and I, just the 3 of us in a room together, as we talk about public safety. These are very important to me, but also very important to the citizens of Baltimore County. We need somebody who's independent and not tied up too much in Democrat or being a Republican. It needs to be somebody who doesn't get hung up on D's and R's, but listens for the best issues. It should be someone who's previously been vetted by the voters of Baltimore County, either a district person or somebody who's run for the entire county, because they have listened to what's important to the citizens of Baltimore County. It should be someone who has agreed to not run in 2 years when we have an open election and has written down that they will not do that. Those are very 2 big issues. The 2 biggest points that I care about is public safety and done work in that area and previously been vetted by the voters. I know there's only 1 person who meets the qualifications for this job, and that, that job is spelled J-O-B. Now that O is gone, it just leaves JB. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schellenberger. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Adam Preller, followed by Pam Newland.
Okay, Mr. Preller.
Good evening, Chair Patoka, members of the council, and fellow community members. My name's Adam Preller, and I'm right-leaning, registered independent, who was proudly called the Rogers Forge Community home for 32 years. I care deeply about Towson and the surrounding neighborhoods, and I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the direction our community is heading. I firmly believe the leadership style and priorities of the county executive play a pivotal role in shaping this trajectory. On September 13th, my wife was stopped by police while walking our dog on our usual route. Just moments earlier, a close family friend had been shot by teens while cleaning his car. Thank God he survived, but he is now facing lifelong complications. This incident brought in a sharp focus, the urgent need for leadership that prioritizes the safety of every resident in Baltimore County. As chief executive of Baltimore County Government, the next county executive must support this council in achieving all its goals, especially when it comes to public safety. Your appointees should have extensive experience, such as serving on the Judicial Proceedings Committee, to bring deep understanding of law and justice to this role. They should also have demonstrated a strong connection to the community, years of listening to residents, knocking on doors, attending local events, and earning the trust of their constituents. In addition to this connection, your appointee must have a track record of considering all perspectives before making decisions that align with the needs and values of the people they serve. In today's polarized environment, where division too often leads to gridlock, and leader, a leader who can bridge divides and achieve meaningful compromises is essential to move our county forward. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, your appointee should be someone who has already earned overwhelming voter support for this position. A leader with proven electoral backing reflects the confidence and trust of the community they serve. It's often said that a successful negotiation leaves both sides feeling they've already achieved the win. For Baltimore County, the clear win is appointing a leader who has already demonstrated the necessary qualifications and readiness to lead. I'm gonna go with JB. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Preller. Okay. Again, we're gonna try to, I think we've heard a couple of comments, we're gonna try to refrain from pointing out any specific candidate, but just, let's try to stay focused on what makes a good county executive here in Baltimore County.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Pam Newland. I'm a Baltimore County resident. Until 18 months ago, when I retired, I was the chief operating officer of Henderson Web Incorporated. I believe that most Baltimore County residents have common hopes and dreams and recognize the importance of the Baltimore County executive position. Most seek an effective leader, one who possesses a proven track record and can guide the county in a positive direction. As the parent of 5 adult children, 4 of whom reside in Baltimore County, I believe this position requires someone with a record of advocating fervently for education, health, and safety for our family, our children, and our grandchildren. As the parent of a Baltimore County teacher, I know how important it is to equip our teachers with the resources they need for the students. The appointed executive must make decisions rooted in the best interest of Baltimore County that requires a person, that requires a person who has a reputation of engaging with community members, listening to concerns, and acting with integrity. This individual must be willing to cross party lines, especially during these polarizing times. They must seek common ground and encourage collaboration to develop solutions that improve Baltimore County. A profound understanding of business, especially during the ever-changing economic landscape, is very important. The big picture, of course, is important, but it's also important that they understand the local economy. An individual with smart business acumen will make informed decisions and maximize resources. Our next county executive needs to have significant legislative experience. It's a necessary foundation. They must understand the process, know how to build a stronger county, and transfer ideas into action. In summary, the appointee must be someone deeply committed to the residents of Baltimore County. They should foster transparency, innovation, and collaboration. As you make this important decision, I urge you to consider a process, excuse me, a person who will move our county forward and who clearly has the qualifications and experience mentioned this evening. And while you don't want to hear the name, I think we all know who I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Newland. Appreciate you being careful about mentioning a specific candidate. I'm gonna ask everyone, I know everyone has come here with 3 minutes of talking points, and if you could look through those talking points and bring out the things that are most important to you, I think that would be helpful to all. We still, we've gone through 8 speakers, and we've got about 60-some more, so let's, let's try to do this as efficiently as possible. Ms. Bel Castro, the next speaker, please.
Certainly. The next speaker is Robert Vermaatka, followed by Todd Shuler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council.
Good to see you, Mr. Vermaatka.
I think I'm gonna lose it. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the qualifications that we will hope for in I'm here to talk about the qualifications that we will hope for in selecting our new county executive. I understand that's what the rules call for. It's a very difficult thing to do at this time, because it's an interim type of appointment. And that being the case, whoever we select should be a person that has a very good, long experience in different things that would lead the one to be a good county executive. One thing that sort of strikes out to me is the budget. The budget, in fact, it's two budgets, and right now, our present budget is a $5 billion budget. Well, when you handle a $5 billion budget, it should be, hopefully, with a person that has had long experience in dealing with fiscal matter of all types, because that's what our budget calls for. The person should also have the experience of being able to talk to large groups of people and explaining, let's say, the budget, or having people into the office and talk to smaller groups where you have special needs for, again, the budget. So we need people or a person who has those type of qualifications and experience because of what they were able to do for many years, whether it be in private practice or public practice, what have you, but have the experience to carry on. That doesn't mean the person's going to come in with new programs necessarily, but to look at the programs that we now have and see if they could better those programs. So it's things like that that we hope for. There's been a lot of things mentioned here this evening of people that are interested in wanting things and what have you. Well, then, we want somebody that will listen to those things and will make recommendations and try to work those things out to see if we have the money to do those things and any number of things that we would have to look at. So it's that type of person who I feel we have to look for that can meet those qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramadka.
Good evening, council. Yes, sir. Bob Ramadka was Essex lawyer cool before Essex lawyer cool was even a thing. My name is Todd Shuler. I am an Essex lawyer. I own and operate a law firm called Blondell, Miller &amp; Shuler in the heart of Essex on Eastern Boulevard, and I'm a constituent of Delegate Koch. I have seen decades of decline in Essex exist. When I was first hired in Essex in 2002, and I've had the good fortune of seeing the Essex resurgence that has gone on due to the investment of this council and County Executive Olszewski, I believe that Essex is in better shape than it has been in my lifetime. And my firm is the face, my firm and my neighbors are the face of that Essex Renaissance. We need a bridge, and I think that's very important for our county executive to have a laser focus on, because the decline in Essex that took place after the loss of steel and industry took my lifetime to get back, and it was replaced with, it was replaced with logistics companies, people that need access to roads, people that relied on that bridge. And so I want a county executive with laser focus on getting a bridge. I want a county executive with the experience of getting accomplishment, the experience, a track record proven of getting things done. I want a county executive that has bipartisan experience, and I want a county executive that can leverage relationships with county, with state officials, with federal officials and with city officials to help get that job done. I do believe that a two-year county executive is the best way to go, because obviously the election for 2026 is already underway, and we're best served by having somebody that is there for a couple of years, that can do the work without being encumbered by a political campaign, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker and speaker on deck.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Schwartz, followed by Patty Nichols.
Okay. It's just like a night of royalty.
Thank you all. My name is Jonathan Schwartz, and I'm a resident of Ricehurst Town, Maryland. And I'm coming before you to say that whoever the next county executive is, they need to take their lead from you. The council has a mandate to govern. Whoever is appointed does not have a mandate to be county executive. The seven of you have a mandate to govern Baltimore County. I implore all of you to take that into consideration when you pick an interim county executive. Whoever she or he is should take their direction from the council. They should recognize the many years of experience. You have four of you have been here for more than a decade. You have experience with public safety, you have experience with budgets, you have experience with all the different agencies. You know which agencies are working well, you know which ones need help. You have the knowledge base, the experience with the staff, the experience with all the county agencies to lead this county, and I implore all of you to take that role seriously. And when you meet and decide who the interim county executive is, that you look amongst yourselves and come up with whatever you want the mandate for that next two years to be, and that you ask them to follow that mandate, because again, the person who has the people with the experience to lead this county are sitting up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
I'm Patty Nichols from District 6. I'm very concerned that the public is very cynical about public service. There are too many people who are jaded and see elected office as a grift. So I feel that it's imperative in the interim county executive is independence. And I beg to differ with some previous speakers that it needs to be someone who has served in elective office. Actually, someone who has not served in elective office will not be beholden to donors and will not be formed by certain county culture passed and prevailing. I think, you know, a selfless citizen servant can shepherd the county very well in these next two years, and I think that you have the excellent opportunity to prove to the citizens of Baltimore County that you have nothing but our best interests at heart by the decision that you make on the interim county executive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Ms. Bel Castro, the next two.
Our next speaker is Sean McIntosh, followed by Michael Galliasso.
Okay. Sean here? Oh, Sean's online?
No, it says in person, Mr. Chair.
Is Sean calling once? I don't, pardon?
She registered as in person, but let me see if I can find them online.
Okay. While we're looking for Sean, why don't we go to Mr. Galliasso?
Thank you. My name is Dr. Michael Galliasso. I'm the president of the Regional Manufacturing Institute of Maryland, a Baltimore County-based advocacy group for manufacturing, and I'm also a member of the Baltimore County Council Economic Advisory Committee. The fiscal picture facing Baltimore County is clear. We face increased deficits at the state level of $2.7 billion, and Trump administration plans to reduce federal agencies and relocate and reduce jobs. The potential relocation and reduction of federal jobs could have economic implications for the state and our county, given that federal employment represents a significant portion of Maryland's workforce. But there is a bright spot. Like a rich vein of gold waiting to be tapped, Baltimore County's manufacturing base is an avenue of economic opportunity. We can no longer ignore. The county has overlooked opportunities to benefit from a robust manufacturing sector. We need an interim county executive who will make manufacturing a priority, providing well-paying jobs and benefits, and creating an economy built on a wealth-producing industry, manufacturing. And you know, the Maryland Department of Commerce reports on its website that the average annual salary of manufacturing in Maryland is $78,000. So let me end with three points to consider. Number one, manufacturing growth would raise family incomes and diversify the county's economy at a time when support from federal and state sources is set to wane. Number two, manufacturing and innovation go hand in hand, which means that the growing county's manufacturing base would accelerate innovation, attendant wealth formation, and tax base creation. And number three, recent data indicate that the county's economy has stalled. Manufacturing is associated with massive economies of scale, meaning the sector can quickly transform and reinvigorate the county's economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Galliasso.
Thank you, Dr. Galliasso, Donbuk High School, class of 1964.
With Todd's dad.
Did we find Ms. McIntosh?
Yeah, she is online.
Okay.
Let me pull her up. Ms. McIntosh, you are online. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Good evening, Council Chair Patoka and council members. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I did register for in-person, but was not able to get in there this evening. I'm Sean McIntosh. I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore County and a current resident of Sparks, Maryland. Thank you for listening to community input as you make your decision about who to choose as the county executive for the next two years. As the county enters some potentially difficult years, financially speaking, it is essential that the council choose someone who has a broad base of experience that will enable them to manage in a fiscally responsible way. This person should be intimately familiar with the county budget's largest cost centers, particularly the schools' operating and construction budgets. The person chosen to be our next county executive should not be willing to look at the next two years as a placeholder position, but as an opportunity to be a real change-maker. This person should want to find and implement solutions to some of Baltimore County's toughest problems. They should have broad community support and connections that would help them to forge public-private partnerships that are necessary in difficult financial times, someone who wants to tackle the biggest problems with a solutions-oriented approach. Baltimore County needs a county executive who isn't enmeshed in politics as usual, but has the respect of politicians, advocates, business owners, and public servants. If you keep these qualities in mind, you will have a county executive that can move us forward over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. Ms. Bel Castro, next two speakers.
Our next speaker is Nancy Demetriades, followed by Neil Goldberg, both here in
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Nancy Demetriades, and I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore County, and I have 30 years of experience as an educator, having served students and families in Pikesville, Lutherville, Essex, Randalls Town, and Baltimore City. We need a county executive who brings vision, capability, and reliability to address both immediate and long-term challenges. But just as importantly, we need a leader who is deeply committed to the well-being of our residents, someone who leads with compassion and empathy. In my experience, I've witnessed firsthand the qualities that our interim county executives should possess, and I believe these are the qualities our community deserves in their servant leader. We need a leader who, as a child, shared her lunch with classmates in need and who later ran a food distribution center during COVID-19 pandemic, providing vital support to families. She sees the big picture while also attending to the smallest details. For instance, she didn't just organize a food distribution site for 1,600 families every week and make it look effortless. She noticed the young boy walking over a mile each week to collect meals for his family and took it upon herself to buy him a wagon to make his journey easier. These simple, thoughtful acts of service speak volumes about the kind of leader we need, someone who sees a need and acts selflessly to help others. We need a leader who, as a child, couldn't put down a book, spending hours at the Towson Library, and later became the president of the Board of Baltimore County Public Libraries. And our libraries are awesome. She is the same leader who earned the prestigious White Blazer Award at Notre Dame Prep and went on to become the president of the PTA at every level of her children's education. She led coalitions and campaigns that resulted in additions, renovations, and complete rebuilds of several schools in Baltimore County. This is the kind of leader who understands that a child's zip code should not determine the quality of their education. These actions fueled by empathy and desire to serve are the qualities we need in our county executive. Moreover, we need a leader who knows how to bring people together. Through example, she has taught me and many others that you never really know someone until you share a meal with them. She has hosted countless events that brought together people from diverse backgrounds, ideologies, and walks of life. Fostering collaboration and understanding in a county as diverse as ours, this ability is essential. Additionally, we need a leader who has not only earned a world-class education, but also gained invaluable real-life experience. As a lifelong resident of Baltimore County and a first-generation American, she has traveled extensively and gained a broad global perspective. This, combined with her deep understanding of our community, will enable her to implement successful strategies from other places to benefit our county. In conclusion...
Okay, thank you.
In conclusion, we need a leader who is competent, reliable, and embodies compassion, empathy, and commitment to public service. We need someone who leads with humility, someone who, when thanked for her work, replies, "Throw it in the sea." This phrase passed down from her grandmother reflects the belief that acts of service should be done without seeking recognition. I have witnessed these qualities firsthand, and I've been proud to call this leader my friend for 45 years. You didn't say that to the other gentleman.
Hang on, hang on. Mr. Demetriades.
So she's exactly what Baltimore County needs in an interim county executive.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Neil Goldberg. I practiced gastroenterology in Baltimore County for 35 years and retired seven years ago. I want to thank the county council and the people here for the opportunity to testify. My experience tells me that one of the most important qualities that we need in a county executive is that he or she is a listener, a problem solver, and has unwavering honesty and experience in the give-and-take of politics. I disagree that we need an outsider. There are candidates in front of us that have proven their honesty, proven their unwavering honesty even when it has cost them votes. Also, we need a consensus builder, and I want to point out a couple of specific challenges that I think go unrecognized. There are a lack of primary care doctors in Baltimore County. I field phone calls all the time from friends that can't find a primary care doctor. Honestly, the only way to get one is by going to concierge route, and I think that's quite unfortunate. We have to look at how to incentivize young doctors to put up a shingle in Baltimore County like I did 40-some-whatever a long time ago. And I am just going to conclude by saying that I know someone... And I am just going to conclude by saying that I know someone that is a candidate. I know how honest he is because he couldn't afford his own white tennis shorts to play tennis with me, and I had to buy them for him, and I was impressed by that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goldberg. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Aaron O'Brien, followed by Nicole Dvorak.
Okay, Aaron O'Brien. Okay, Aaron with an E.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Aaron O'Brien. I live in Towson. I've been active in the PTAs and PTSAs for 16 years. I've served numerous positions at all the different school levels. I've been a substitute for Baltimore County. In 2011, I had a student at the most crowded school in all of Maryland, Hampton Elementary, right in Lutherville-Simonium. They had 600 bodies and a school built for 300. It was more than 180% overcrowded. That can happen again. We need somebody in leadership that wants renovations, additions, new buildings, but also has their eye out that we don't have overcrowding. I was the PGSA president during COVID at Lockraven High School. I'm looking for somebody that understands education policy, the importance of the in-school learning environment, and someone that can work directly with the school board. For the last eight years, I've been a volunteer with the Student Support Network. During COVID, I spent nine months at Parkville High School doing food distribution. Each week, before the cards were hardly through our line, we'd run out of toilet paper, diapers, laundry pods, feminine products, and when those cards would pull up and you couldn't provide those for them, the look of disappointment was unreal, just that they had to go home and tell their family they couldn't have basic necessities. The Student Support Network right now is even looking for light bulbs. Imagine not being able to have lights to do your homework or to bathe your children. Food insecurity is very real in Baltimore County. We need someone that knows what all the families need about food insecurity, education, can be independent, and still work with everyone at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. For everybody keeping score, we have had 17 speakers present, and we have 59 to go. Fifty-nine, five-nine. Next speaker is Ms. Bel Castro.
The next speaker is Nicole Dvorak, followed by Nancy Hefford.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fabulous. Good evening, Council Chair Petoka and fellow council members. My name is Nicole Dvorak. I'm a former Baltimore County Public Library Union Executive Board member, machinist local 4538. I was on the very first union contract negotiating team on behalf of Baltimore County Public Library staffed. I worked at both the Catansville and Randalls Town branches, and before working at the library system, was a staffer for Howard County Council Chair Liz Walsh. We're here tonight to discuss what we want to see in a county executive, but really, it's what we want to see from any elected or appointed official at any level. As a union member, I want to see someone who not just says they support unions but acts like it. It doesn't mean much to say that someone grew up in the shadow of a steel mill or word teacher and then gut-punched public workers in those same shadows. All public employees in Baltimore County should be paid at least $65,000 a year, and I want a county executive and a county council to get us there and quickly. I really can't stand one more word from any official who claims they care if people can afford food or housing costs, when in the year 2024, we have full-time public library staff being paid $37,000 a year. You heard that right, three-seven. It's not like we didn't fight tooth and nail in contract negotiations for a lot more. We were denied by lawyers paid by taxpayers with support of the county executive and with funds approved by this council. I will never forget that when staff in the contract negotiating team put forth an offer for a general wage increase, the library system's counteroffer was approximately 0%. I don't want a caretaker county executive. I want a county executive. This job is tasked with how $5 billion is spent, and hopefully not for a bunch of union-busting lawyers and other things. In closing, the library board of trustees paid lobbyists to try and kill state legislation that gave us the right to unionize. There should be actual standards for people who want to be appointed elected officials, and sometimes it seems that protecting business interests and the status quo are the only requisites. You can raise the bar. The question is if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on time. Next two speakers, Ms. Bel Castro.
Next is Nancy Hefford, followed by Margaret Forte.
Thank you, Chairman Petoka and council members. I'm Nancy Hefford. I'm representing the county seat here and the business community of Towson. As you've heard from many of the prior speakers, we can't have a caretaker for Baltimore County. This position is too important. We need someone who not only understands the importance of fostering a vibrant business community, but also takes proactive steps in growth and success throughout all of Baltimore County. We need someone who supports our local law enforcement and sends a strong, unequivocal message to the media and to the communities that crime is not tolerated here in Baltimore County. We need someone who advocates for the assistance for the homeless but maintains a firm stance against aggressive behavior. Throughout Baltimore County, we must strongly promote smart development that creates jobs, provides housing for our Baltimore County workforce. Baltimore County manages a $5 billion budget. When selecting a candidate, it is critical to consider the skills and experiences managing and balancing a budget of this magnitude. I ask you to choose a candidate who will work to leave Baltimore County, a better place for all of its citizens, and refuse to accept status quo. We cannot afford to keep losing our residents, our businesses, our developers, to other communities that would eagerly welcome them. I pray for all of you making this very tough decision. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Hefford.
Our next speaker is Margaret Forte, followed by Meg O'Hair.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Forte. I have four points that I like to make emphasis on for the new, hopefully, interim county executive. My points are, when I say "we," I mean the people. We need an experienced people person who makes everyone, regardless of their background, feel included in the community. Second, we need someone who knows where public resources are and how to obtain them to apply to the challenges Baltimore County community faces. The third, we need tireless worker who will show up for little events that make a big difference in the communities and what a difference it makes when you show up in person. We are relying on the council to find a person they trust is absolutely honest and whose words can be trusted. The council must be absolutely sure their pick is the honest and trustworthy person as well. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Forte.
Thank you, trustee Forte. Good seeing you.
Okay, another trustee.
Good evening. My name is Meg O'Hair. I'm a community leader in Carney, Maryland. I'm also a trustee at the Community College, Baltimore County, as well as a former school board member. I have a lot of things I wanted to say, but the most important thing I want to say is we need the council to select somebody who has the courage to work with you to create legislation that will somehow rip Baltimore County public schools out of the hands of amateurs and educate our children. Since I started as a volunteer 30 years ago, we've fallen from one of the top-rated schools in the early 2000s under MSDE ratings, probably one, two, or three, and we're now 17 out of 25 districts. We're spending $18,255 this year per student in Baltimore County, and I don't know where everybody is thinking, but our property values are going down because we have a school system that is not educating our children. If you notice, whenever we promote goodness in Baltimore County, it's usually one of our private schools, Eastern Tech, Carver, Western Tech. That's not good enough. In my community of Carney, we have very, very socio-economically disadvantaged children who were redistricted after having been 30 years at Oakley Elementary School into Carney Elementary School, and they're good kids. They have a good principle. What we need is somebody to have the courage to figure out a way to stop what's going on, put an end to inefficient government, I mean inefficient school bureaucracy.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hair. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please, and the speaker on deck.
Our next speaker is Joe Medizewski.
American Joe Medizewski.
Thank you, followed by David Ginsburg.
You gave it a good try, though, Ms. Bel Castro. You should have done.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Chair, my name is American Joe Medizewski. I got elected to the Maryland Legislature and the House of Delegates when I was 24. I got elected to the State Senate, and I served a total of 20 years in the Maryland Legislature. I served with Councilman Catch at the time. He was a delegate, and we have a history which I'm very pleased to tell you about, but we don't have time tonight. But anyway, I did want to tell you that I also, after I ran for governor in 1994, and I placed second in the Democratic primary. And after that, I lobbied constituents and clients in front of the legislature for 30 years. So I just retired, spent 50 years in politics and government. I'd just like to share a couple of thoughts with you today. I had to hone down this presentation, as most people have, but I'll do the best I can. I fully expect our next county executive to be prepared, honest, and dedicated to raising the standards of ethical and professional performance that our county residents fully deserve. I once asked William Donald Schaefer, when he was governor, what I could do as an elected official to be successful, and without hesitation, he looked at me and he said, "Joe, help people." That's all he said. So I kept that in mind the whole time that I served in and out of the legislature, and the decision facing this council must not be made for a placeholder or to place a bridge, provide a bridge until the next election. The important thing is that you help people of Baltimore County while this is all in place. They need a solid education because the issues are complex. They need a trustworthy reputation to raise the ethical standards here. So I will continue, I will stop with that because I have two more items, but I just want to say that what we need to do is we need to have someone guide this particular county with a very, very strong hand, and I just want to make one plea, that we have to address crime. We have to address crime here. So I thank you for listening to me today, and I just want to let you know that I'm a very happy constituent of Councilman Catch till this moment. So thank you very much for your, for all your good work.
Okay, thank you, American Joe. I like saying "American Joe." Mr. Ginsburg?
I think I'm breaking your microphone now. David Ginsburg, I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore County and the head of a major transformative project in the Northwest Corridor. I want to remind everyone that this is a two-year appointment, and we don't have time for people to learn on the job. That's very critical. They need to hit the ground running. I also want to make the council's life much easier. There's been a lot of candidate names mentioned tonight, so if you throw them all in the trash, you'll have an easier decision to make later in the month. The number-one thing is the person needs to have major and significant high-level management and executive experience. We don't have time for someone to learn the job. Number two, the ability and experience of managing large-scale budgets. We all know it's going to be tough the next few years. There's going to be a lot less money coming from the feds, and we need someone who's used to managing a budgetary experience and not learning it. The next one, familiarity with the educational system. It's 50% of the budget. While it's managed by other people, they need to understand how the budget works. They play a pivotal role in crafting that budget that is then executed by the Board of Education. Sustained and ongoing civil engagement, and lastly, and very important, we have a growing and very large, diverse community in Baltimore County, and it'd be great if we had someone that looked like that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ginsburg. Ms. Bel Castro, next two speakers.
Our next speaker is Kristin Zaminsky, who is online, followed by Courtney Jenkins, who is here in person. Oh, jeez. One moment. Ms. Zaminsky, you are online. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Hello, Kristin.
Wonderful. Hi, thanks, everybody. Thank you for hosting this event. Thank you for allowing, giving the opportunity to the community to weigh in. We really appreciate that. In an effort to allow, my name's Kristin Zaminsky. I'm from the Northwest Baltimore Corridor. In an effort to allow voters to decide who gets this job, I think it's important that we have someone who has publicly stated that they will not run to the next term. This is the decision of the county council. So, you know, we voted you in, and we trust your opinion, but when the time comes, I think it would be great if someone who had publicly stated that they will not secretly elect one and give us a chance to vote and weigh in on the actual candidate. The other thing is, this is a truncated term. It is not a full term. So we need someone who will start, hit the ground running from day one, someone who knows the workings of Baltimore County. We don't have a lot of time for them to learn on the job. We want someone who is intimately experienced with Baltimore County government, knows how the workings, the inner dealings, and how to fix things and make it grow. And, you know, everything is, there's always room for improvement. So we're, Baltimore County is going in the right direction, and we want to keep it floating that way. All these candidates have a passion for civil service, but this is a special situation in that it's a short period of time, so we need a special candidate that will be very effective and very efficient, given the small amount of time that they have. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Good evening, Chairman Petoka and members of the Baltimore County Council. My name is Courtney Jenkins, president of the Metropolitan Baltimore Council of AFL-CIO Unions. Our Central Labor Council represents over 100 affiliated local unions made of approximately 80,000 union members in the central Maryland area, including here in the great place of Baltimore County. Organized labor has helped usher in a renaissance of workers with nearly 70% of the public-supporting labor unions. Baltimore County has been at the forefront of this renaissance. Workers have come together and organized in cultural spaces like a library system, full-time faculty at our own community college, and even in retail spaces, with workers at the Apple Store in Towson Town Center being the first in the nation to unionize. Yet, there are still obstacles that stand in the way of working families in attaining the dignity and respect they deserve. According to the Economic Policy Institute, employers spend upwards of $433 million every year on union-busting firms aimed at eliminating the ability of workers to exercise their collective voice in the workplace. For example, the Community College of Baltimore County Administration has hired a high-priced union-busting firm to challenge the bargaining unit composition in a cynical attempt to discourage full-time faculty. Therefore, having a county executive that understands the nuances and intricacies of labor law and workers' rights is necessary. Leadership is about bringing people together to make the right thing happen when it wouldn't otherwise happen. And on behalf of our union coalition, we respectfully present labor's priorities for respective candidates seeking to be the next Baltimore County executive. The listing below is a non-exhaustive list ranked in no particular order of significance. First... First, securing and solidifying relationships with workers and their unions. The next county executive should prioritize developing relationships with labor unions and standing on the side of workers, especially publicly. The next county executive should also work to create mechanisms in spaces where workers and their unions can regularly communicate with the executive's office, for example, labor advisory councils. Worker's safety. When dedicated workers leave home for their shifts each day, they should be able to do so with the expectation that they will return to their home and their families. Enforcing the safety standards and regulations for workers should be a top priority for the next county executive. Leading by example, as an employer, the county has the opportunity to set the standard by ensuring public employees have the tools, skills, and benefits they deserve. When workers negotiate collective bargaining agreements and organize, the county executive should be an ally. Next, protecting and expanding workers' rights. The next county executive should continue to honor the collective bargaining agreements it has with its workforce, but also look to build upon the gains made by workers and their unions. Actions such as prevailing wage enforcement and compliance, and using the influence of the office to support federal workers at major work hubs like the Social Security Administration and Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services can go a long way in protecting and expanding workers' rights. Ensuring the budget is not balanced on the backs of working people, a county's budget reflects its values. The next county executive should collaborate with organized labor to develop ways to help grow the revenue of Baltimore County in a way that keeps working people top of mind, while maintaining commitments to appropriately fund vital public infrastructure, A.K. 20 Public Education. And last but not least, expanding opportunity for working families. As the county looks to grow, it can do so through development with strong jobs and careers that are a pathway to the middle class, generationally transforming the work that uplifts families and strengthens the county. When organized labor is a part of economic development, it creates a cycle in which workers empower through good jobs and in turn reinvest in their community's economy. Baltimore County should implement and encourage higher labor standards as it relates to development, whether through public transportation or buildings and infrastructure, or at places like Trade Point Atlantic. This can be done through supporting apprenticeship programs, prioritizing prevailing wage expansion, implementing project labor agreements on county projects, or supporting labor peace. Our labor council views every piece of legislation and every policy priority in Baltimore County as one that affects working families, whether directly or indirectly. Applying this lineage in the search for the next Baltimore County executives helps us to ensure no workers left behind. We encourage elected officials in the legislature at all levels of government to be allies and use their influence for the common good, because when workers succeed, we all succeed. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide input on the selection of next Baltimore County executive. We look forward to working with the incoming executives so that all workers in Baltimore County prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Jack Greenberg, followed by Kirk Huddles, who are both in person.
Mr. Greenberg, hello.
Good evening. My name is Jack Greenberg. I'm a resident of Owings Mills, have been a resident of Baltimore County for over 50 years, and I'm the board treasurer of the Piceville Armory Foundation. I'm also a retired CPA. I'm here this evening to provide what I believe are the minimum requirements for the interim county executive. I believe the county executive must: understand and represent all of Baltimore County, not just the North, the South, the East, or the West; understand county government processes, especially budgets; have experience within Baltimore County government; have executive management experience, such as running a business or a large governmental department; be an effective people manager; be an effective communicator; and have no interest in running for a full-term as county executive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Kirk Huddles, followed by Nick Allen.
Yeah, good evening, Chairman Petoka, members of the county council. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name's Kirk Huddles. I'm a lifelong Baltimorean. Spent my formative years in this building and in this room when my father sat on the side that you all are sitting, so I appreciate what you're doing and the grave decision. I happen to have been joined by John Miller, an old friend of mine who I didn't know would be here, whose father preceded my father, so he and I both appreciate what you've done, and we understand the decision you're making is an important one. And it's important for many reasons, and they've been expressed here tonight by many people, all goodwill, good intention, but you don't, the, the next interim county executive won't be a two-month job or a three-month job. It's a two-year job. It's a long time. So we've, we've heard from some people tonight that I think are relevant, that, that have been in the arena or recently left the arena, State's Attorney Schellenberger, former executive Hutchinson, former councilwoman Quirk, and they've expressed things that I'd like to express that are necessary, the need for, to keep our AAA rating. It's important. We're at a difficult time. We, the crime issue is on everyone's forefront, so today, your decision, in my opinion, calls for leadership, calls for somebody that's been in the arena, somebody that has exhibited the ability for consensus, and quite candidly, someone that's fiercely independent, somebody that can speak to Republicans, speak to Democrats, and lead for the next two years and do it genuinely, and perhaps somebody that has received the support from the public in previous times. But I do appreciate where you sit. It is a, it is a grave and an important one. We know you'll make the right decision. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Huddles. Now we have Delegate Nick Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. For the record, my name is Nick Allen. I'm a delegate representing Legislative District Eight, which overlaps Councilman districts Five and Six, and I'm a resident of District Five. I'll cut right to the chase. These next two years are not going to be easy. I think we all know that, both down in Annapolis and here in Baltimore County. We all know the budget is going to be the foremost issue for us in state and county government moving forward. Baltimore County literally cannot afford to waste any time. The work absolutely must begin immediately upon the swearing-in of the new county executive, and we need someone who is ready for it. We need a county executive who will work, starting on day one, with the council, with the county delegation in the General Assembly, and with the entire state government. We cannot be, we cannot be on an island, and we must be proactive and assertive. We must work in partnership at every level, and we cannot wait around hoping these problems will solve themselves. Additionally, we need a county executive who is ready, able, and willing to make tough decisions when it comes to the budget and to funding. We need someone with the political courage to make those decisions, stand by them, and then move on to solving the next crisis. To put it simply, we need a wartime county executive. We need, we need leadership, and we need a steady hand. We need someone who has the knowledge, experience, relationships, and fortitude to not only weather the coming budgetary storm, but ensure the county is stronger than ever when this term is up. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I look forward to working closely with you and whomever you select as the next county executive.
Thank you, Delegate Allen.
You ready, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Pester, followed by Kim Ross.
Okay, I think Ms. Pester is online. Why don't we do this? Let's have Kim Ross come up while we locate Delegate Pester. Kim, I thought I saw you floating in and out. Okay. Somebody would be kind enough to grab Kim, and we'll go to the next speaker.
Our next speaker would be Richard Przyzinski, and then I'll call Delegate Pester.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. Sorry for the audible.
Rick Przyzinski, I was born in Baltimore, Baltimore City, raised in Baltimore City, but spent my adult life in northern Baltimore County. I want to admit the fact that I am a Republican. I just wanted to mention that because, Mr. Koch, you're my representative, and you've done a very nice job when I've reached out to you. I hope that whoever you do pick would run their administration on a bipartisan way. I really do, since I am a Republican. And I'm going to save a little bit of time because almost everything I wanted to say has already been said, so I don't want to repeat that and save some time. I just want to point out two problems that we see in Baltimore County. I know everyone sees it, and everyone has said something about it. Crime is a major issue. And so I, my wife's sitting here, and she'll attest to this, went out and got my carry permit, because I know I'm going to need it someday. But the joke to it is, I don't own a gun, and I probably don't want to own a gun, but I feel I'm going to need to someday. And I really believe at some point, if we don't get crime under control, you're going to have a vigilante society. People are going to take matters into their own hands. You've seen it in parts of the city, and I really worry about that. And the other thing is, and I know everyone's experienced this, but if you've ridden on the Beltway anytime recently, it is scary. So you've got three lanes. The outer lane is about 85, the middle lane is about 75, the slow lane's on the right, and people are passing on the shoulder. It's crazy. There's no police. There is no police on the Beltway. There's no state police, there's no Baltimore County police. Now, I don't blame them. We don't have them. My, according to what I read, is that we're 400 police short. Somebody's got to do something and figure that out. I spent part of the time in Florida, and I can, I know what Governor Sanders has done is come up with some creative ways of getting police out from New York and bringing them, bringing them in. So I guess the, the last thing I'd, I'd like to say, and I'll be brief, is that I looked at Baltimore County, looked at the statistics, and someone else said this, "He's got a $5 million budget, $5 billion budget, 6,600 employees. That's a big job." I mean, and I, obviously you know that, but I've, I've dealt with a lot of corporations. There aren't many corporations in this area, except international, big, major corporations like McCormick that even match that size. So what I'd like to do is take the rest of my time and, and give it to Mr. Schellenberg, even though he's not here, because everything he read is exactly what I put down. So either he took my notes, or I took his, and I agree with everything he said, including who should run the county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you just accuse the State's Attorney of plagiarism? So we have, Kim Ross is here, and Delegate Pester said she was having trouble unmuting herself.
It's because I didn't elevate her yet, but I just did that.
Okay, well, let's do Ms. Ross, and then we'll go to Delegate Pester next.
Okay.
Trustee Ross. Good evening. I never want to take Delegate Pester's spot, but if she's okay with it, I'm fine with it. Good evening, council. I am trustee Kim Ross, and I'm very honored to be here. Thank you for doing this. So, you know, just a couple of things I want to share with you, just my thoughts about qualities that I think are important. We all know that this will be probably a historic fiscal situation next year. So I think one of the most important factors that we all have to be thinking about is who can best help us navigate that as a county. And so we need somebody who has some state budget experience, some experience with financial allocation. I think we do have an applicant who is serving on a finance committee right now, who is involved in an official capacity with deciding on some state budget issues and matters, including education financing. As most of you know, I serve as a board trustee for the Community College of Baltimore County, and we depend on the county executive's commitment to the college-promised scholarship, along with state funding, and of course, the support of this council, to be able to continue to give and to provide students free tuition. Right now, we're doing that to the tune of 98% of the students here, resident students here in Baltimore County, attending for free. So that's something we want to continue to do. We don't have time for a county executive who doesn't understand that. We need to be able to continue to push that forward until we're 100% if we can get there. So I think that's going to be really important to think about. We need somebody who understands that. Second, community engagement. We need a county executive who has that track record. And of course, that goes without saying, but I think it's worth saying, because it's so important. We need a community, a county executive who is working with the community right now, who has that heart, who will continue to do that. I'm also a homeowners association president, and I work with, is that saying I need to stop?
You can conclude.
Okay, thank you. And so I can tell you that there's a lot that I try to do, that we do, as sort of a mini-government. We pass resolutions and amendments. I do what I can do. But I do look to, I mean, Councilmen are telling me how many times do I call you, with things that probably aren't the most urgent thing you have to deal with that day. But, I appreciate it. So that, we depend on those relationships, and we need a county executive who will work with us, who's going to be a strong community partner. We have an applicant, I know a number of the applicants are doing community work, which is great, but I can speak to, we, we absolutely have a, a candidate who is a known figure in my district. She is with the senior centers, she is at schools, she is working with community associations, she has attended my town hall, she was there for my annual community engagement event. She was out there, talking with people, learning, not in any sort of political way, but just there. And we need a county executive who's going to be on the ground, actively involved, who's going to continue to support the Office of Community Engagement. We need those outreach officers and a county executive who values them and the work they do to help us stay, stay connected. So again, it is, I think it bears saying that, you know, we need someone who's going to make time for that kind of engagement on top of everything else. And then lastly, I'll just say this, tough decision, we know, but some of this is really not rocket science. The public has already told you what they want. They already said it. They have, we have elected Johnny O'Sheafsky twice as our county executive. That's what we want, but he's moving on. So we need somebody who has proximity to Johnny O'Sheafsky, who has visibility into his priorities, his projects, the work that he's doing, and is in position today to be able to pick those projects up and move them forward seamlessly. We're not looking for Johnny O Part Two, necessarily. If we can get it, great. But we need somebody who can chart their own path and look for new opportunities, and at the same time, give us that vision and perspective, that platform that we as voters signed on to. Thank you. I appreciate it, and good luck with your decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Delegate Pester.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Petoka and council. I want to start by poorly paraphrasing Thomas Paine when I say that these are truly the times to try our Baltimore County, our state of Maryland citizen's souls. The interim county executive must be an independent thinker who knows this county, possibly having worked in one of the offices in the county, who understands the needs and wants on day one, who appreciates that this is a two-year span, not a two-month, a two-year span, but who does not want to be the county executive for long term, the voted-in county executive. This person must understand intrinsically and extrinsically budget. Budget Matters has worked in county government or in positions where large budgets have been handled, where large sums of money are no surprise but to be managed and handled appropriately, who must understand the human resources in an environment such as a whole county government, understanding how to work with the offices, with the employees, and with the council. This is a person who must understand education, maybe having worked in education, a person who knows how to work with the superintendent and the boards, not do the work of the system, but understand the management, the policies, and procedures that will impact the system, which obviously will impact our children. This person must understand that industry and workforce in Baltimore County is growing and are growing and changing, and that we need someone who understands the broad life. This has to be someone who has insight into the many concerns in law enforcement and the needs of all first responders, who understands existing projects around the county, has worked with government officials and departments to this end. This person must be dedicated to our youth and seniors, and again, one who appreciates all of the work that must be done in the next two years and prepare it for the next elected county executive. Thank you, and bless you for the work and the decision you have to make. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Delegate Pester.
Our next speaker is Barry Williams, who is here in person, followed by Will Anderson, who is online.
Thank you. The county executive should be a person of high integrity, a thought leader, someone for whom that is never in doubt. This county executive should have good fiscal acumen, some of who understands the components of a large budget, and should have experience handling large budgetary matters, always looking for efficiencies. This is especially important in that our financial outlook in the county and the state is not promising. It would be an advantage for the CE to be familiar and comfortable with leaders in Annapolis, our federal leaders, and with our contiguous counties in Baltimore City, shared economies when and where it makes sense. Shared economies when and where it makes sense is one way to tackle the problem. Supporting economic development through the creation of well-paying jobs is another. The county executive should be a good crisis manager, one who remains calm while facing dire situations, someone who can respond when needed to give direction, both internally and in front of a camera. The CE should be a good communicator, one who can preside not only over ribbon-cutting activities, but also be comfortable speaking to families and the community when it is saddened and in need of healing. Having experience in county government is not essential, but it does help with understanding its culture and gives one the ability to be fully operational day one. The same is true about working in the school system. Not needed, but it does afford the county executive with a better perspective about educational matters, including the community college. Understanding how the various systems within the county connect with one another is key. Quality of life matters are fundamental to our community. People care about the things that affect them on a day-to-day basis. Fixing public safety issues, fixing potholes, getting direct answers to questions, the ability to get permits in a timely manner, timely manner, having quality educators teaching at our schools with up-to-date resources and buildings, parks that are well cared for, easily accessible websites to navigate county department and offices are among things that people want and expect. In summation, the county executive should be the leader for all, and the citizens of Baltimore County want and expect that to be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Next is Will Anderson, followed by Erica Ma, who is in person. Mr. Anderson, you may begin.
Many thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, and Chris Hewitt for managing the chat. We've got an active bunch of, 100 of us in here, active citizens. My name's Will Anderson, my family has lived in Baltimore County in Catonsville since the 1990s, and I have proudly served beside all of you in this county. I was the director of economic and workforce development from 2013 to 2020. So tonight, we're asking an important question, imagining what we need now. This is the fourth time I've been invited to think on this, having served under Johnny O, Don Moller, and Kevin Kamenetz. When I look back on the qualities we needed then, it's informative of what we need now. And each time, we really need to face the times we live in to imagine what's needed to drive the quality of life, which is what economic development is all about. And previous county executives have faced tough times, made choices and had major successes when we had steel plants closing, we took action and ended up with Trade Point Atlantic when we had distillery shuttering, we took action and came up with Guinness a new tourism driver, and the list goes on and on with McCormick and Stanley, Black and Decker, and keeping jobs here. And why did that happen? Why was there success in economic development booming? Yes, it's about our strong community, it's also about our well-run government. You know, Baltimore County is a great place to build companies in our local economy, and we are an economic powerhouse. Baltimore County is number two in jobs in Maryland, $50 billion in economic output, and good government is hard, a little bit boring, but it's hard. Keeping those, that AAA bond rating is amazing and important, and we fund most of the county's expenses on just two sources of income, income tax and property tax. So jobs is the lifeblood of everything that we need here, live, work, learn and play. So when I look for the qualities, I get five when I look back. We need courage. The first trait is making tough choices to hand off a well-run operation in 2026. The second is financial acumen, that $10 billion worth of decisions, that means real budgetary experience, not serving on committees. Third is people focus, keeping and drawing in talent to serve, keeping the continuity of our great Baltimore County employees is critical. Uniting, that's been mentioned here, but we need to stay close to our vital cousin, Baltimore City, we share this economy, and Maryland. And then above all, the last one is integrity. We really must know and trust and rely on this executive for two years and have clear eyes that running a county is a massive business operation. So executive experience and tested temperament are vital. Thank you for listening to all of us and the citizens of this county. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And I'm going to give a quick update of the scorecard. We've had 33 people speak so far, and we have 42 more to go. Okay, next speaker, Ms.
Our next speaker is Erica Ma, who is in person, followed by Makita Scott, who is online.
This is not for my height. It doesn't fall down on me. Hello, my name is Erica Ma, and I'm a parent, teacher and advocate from Catonsville in the southwest area. As I finished writing this in my classroom, my mapping app had said that it would take me 53 minutes to drive up the Beltway to attend this meeting. A large part of me was tired from the day of teaching and disciplining students, and I really wanted to just go home and grade papers and wrap Christmas gifts. I've already sent in a letter of support, but I still wanted to come up here through the fog and traffic, and then the later accident on York Road, to make sure that voices from all corners of the county are heard. I do thank you for having the virtual option as well, so that my neighbor, Will, could also be here virtually. Our county is huge, and it is easy and often happens for everything to be centered around our central area of Towson. The corners of the county in the southeast and southwest are sometimes forgotten. Occasionally, we are told that Towson is central in our county. It's not central when some folks can get here 10 minutes while others take nearly over an hour, like today, to get up here. What we need is a county executive who not only remembers all parts of the county, but is already connected with and worked with folks in all parts of the county. County executives of Oshewski's town halls and Superintendent Rogers' community meetings at a variety of locations have reached out to the corners of the county, and our next county executive needs to continue and expand that interaction. Our next county executive must be someone who has been involved with communities and advocates throughout the county, not just with the government. Someone who's already reached out to the corners and worked to make sure all schools and libraries are considered equally and equitably. Someone with business experience and acumen, but with a focus on the people. As a teacher, we desperately need someone who knows and has worked with schools, teachers and their communities, and understands the challenges of not only facilities, but also the students' needs for basic necessities, social, emotional supports. And to be perfectly blunt, we need some diversity in our council. Your identity certainly does not determine your qualifications, but for sure, it influences understanding and viewpoints on issues and how they should be considered and solved. I'm a schoolteacher, I'm going to follow the rules. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Ma.
Our next speaker is Makita Scott, followed by Deli Okafur.
Okay, is Makita, Makita's online?
Ms. Scott, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening. My name is Makita Scott, and I am a Baltimore County resident of District 4. I believe it is essential to have a county executive who is deeply committed to working collaboratively with all regions of the county. Each area within Baltimore County has its own unique challenges and strengths, and a successful leader must recognize and embrace this diversity. This means seeking input from every community, and just as importantly, respecting and acting on that input. Community voices should not only be heard, but also actively included in the decision-making processes. The partnership between county government and its, is the foundation of a thriving community. A county executive who prioritizes community involvement fosters trust, transparency, shared vision for future. Residents need to feel confident that their concerns matter regardless of their location or the size of their community. When people see their input reflected in policy and initiatives, it strengthens the relationship between the government and those whom they serve. Equity is another critical quality I hope to see in the next county executive. No single community or group should feel overlooked or left behind. Equal visibility, representation and resource allocation across the county are fundamental to building a cohesive and united Baltimore County. The next leader should ensure that every voice is given equal weight, promote fairness and inclusivity in all aspects of governance. In short, the next Baltimore County executive should be a collaborative, community-centered and equity-driven leader. These qualities will not only address current challenges, but also pave the way for a stronger, more connected future for all of us. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with each of you on this important matter. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Good evening. My name is Deli Okafur, and I grew up in Baltimore County, attended schools right here in the 8th Legislative District. Over the years, I've seen this county go through many changes, and I care so deeply about how it will continue to evolve. I'm someone who spent my career in public service and working in the community, and I believe our next county executive should have real experience in government and a proven record of getting things done. They should know Baltimore County well, have a history of working across differences and aisles to find solutions, and be able to bring, and have the track record of bringing resources and opportunities back to the people who live here. But it's just as important that we have someone who has earned the trust of the people. Being elected by voters matters because it shows that they've built connections and have proven that they can lead in a way that people believe in. Experience matters, working together matters, and results matter. Baltimore County needs someone who can take the progress we've made and keep it going. So in conclusion, I urge you to select a leader who will inspire confidence, build bridges and deliver results. The right leader will not only lead Baltimore County, but continue to bring out the best in it. Thank you all for your time and for your dedication to this important decision.
Thank you, Ms. Okafur.
Our next speaker is Paul Hoyer, followed by Laurie Taylor Mitchell, who are both here in person.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. I appreciate allowing me this opportunity to speak before you. My name is Paul Hoyer. I am a lifelong Baltimorean of over 60 years, and who has lived in various parts of Baltimore County since 1989. I am also a Republican. I am here because I care about Baltimore, and more importantly, I care about Baltimore County. I take great offense to a term that I'm hearing lately, that Baltimore County is Baltimore City North, given the changes that have occurred in the county over the past 10 years. I'm looking for a candidate who will make Baltimore, and I apologize for using an overused word these days, great again, to the county that I always remember. To do that, we need a candidate who has a proven legislative, as well as business background, that will allow them to effectively run and manage the affairs of the county. A long history of political experience, not only on a local level, but more importantly, at a state level during these next two years, given the challenges ahead, demonstrated ability as well to work with both sides of the aisle to get things done. A candidate that can address the pressing issues that the county will benefit all county residents, including but not limited to fiscal, overall public safety, crime, including juvenile crime, education, housing and future development, and support from our local law enforcement. There is only one candidate in my mind that fits that, those criteria. I hope that you will recognize that person. Let's make Baltimore County great again. I thank you for your time, and best wishes this holiday season. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know what the acronym for that would be, BCGA. Okay.
Next is Laurie Taylor Mitchell. I'm sorry, Laurie Taylor Mitchell, followed by Adam Shingate.
Sorry, Ms. Taylor Mitchell.
Good evening, members of the county council. I'm Dr. Laurie Taylor Mitchell, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. The interim county executive should have an exceptional and consistent history of leadership and service, including service through volunteering to Baltimore County over the last 15 years at least. Major service to residents during the crisis months of the pandemic and awareness of the persistence of poverty, job losses and the effects of inflation are especially important. He or she should have ongoing, strong relationships throughout the county government, including meeting with elected officials, government staff, business owners and residents about their ongoing issues and concerns. Since education funding comprises about half of the county budget, the interim executive should have a thorough understanding of the school system, school infrastructure and operational issues throughout county public schools. With the student poverty rate now at 74% of all students in BCPS, over 81,000 students, and 44% of all families in Baltimore County now struggling to make ends meet, the interim executive must work diligently with elected officials and county staff to address poverty in the county, which is now a major threat to our social and economic stability. Finally, the interim county executive should be available as a major resource for all members of the county council, working to solve problems in their respective districts. Availability and transparency and communication are essential to strong working relationships with council members, who in turn will share their expertise with the interim executive about their issues of concern. We need continuous dialogue between the county executive and the county council in order to address the major problems affecting the county, integrated with an understanding of the broader economic and social dynamics of our region, including those of Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor Mitchell. Ms. Belkaster, our next speakers.
Our next speaker is Adam Shingate, followed by Delegate Robert Long, who is on virtually.
Hello. My name is Adam Shingate. I am a professor of political science at Johns Hopkins University. I'm speaking tonight in my personal capacity as a resident of Baltimore County and not on behalf of the university. My views on the qualities required for a successful interim Baltimore County executive are informed by more than 25 years of academic research and teaching on American government and public policy. As a political scientist, I want to draw your attention to some research that may help the council in making its selection. Although many Americans have a negative view of the federal government, the vast majority of voters have a very positive view of local government. This is for two reasons. First, as we've heard repeatedly this evening, people value and appreciate high-quality public education, public safety, and all of the other crucial programs and services the county provides. Second, voters trust local government to do the right thing. They trust you. They see what can be accomplished when our elected officials put partisanship aside and work in the public interest. With this in mind, I urge the council to select an interim county executive who understands the crucial role county government plays in the lives of individuals and families, and whose dedication to public service will safeguard and protect this public trust. This person must be an individual of extraordinary integrity, with deep roots in the community, and a demonstrated commitment to the principles of transparency and fairness in the administration of their responsibilities. They will work across party lines to do what is best for the citizens of Baltimore County. I've written a letter to each of you going into more detail on which candidate best represents these qualities. Let me just summarize here. The next two years will be a critical time for our community. Baltimore County is poised for opportunity, but we face a number of significant challenges in meeting this moment. Fixing our infrastructure, improving education, planning for smart growth, and ensuring fiscal responsibility are just some of the issues the interim county executive will tackle in the next two years. I trust the council will select the candidate who successfully combines the knowledge, experience and dedication necessary so that all members of our community can thrive and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shingate.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do not, I have not been able to locate Delegate Long. He did register virtually, unless he happens to be in the audience. I'm going to move on.
Delegate Long? No.
Okay. I checked telephone, and Bob and Robert, and he's, I don't see him on the list. So I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who would be Todd Warren, followed by Tim Hodge.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and council, thank you for the opportunity to come in today and speak. I spent 12 years on the planning board, and we went over the budget every year. Four people that are still on the board are going to start that process here in another month. We have a $5 billion budget in the county. It's quite a large budget. Just to give you an example, one of our Fortune 500 companies here in our markets, Sinclair Broadcasting generates $3 billion in revenue. So this is $2 billion bigger than one of our largest clients in our market. I believe that a person that would take over the county council would be a person that has experience not only running a budget, or maybe running a company, but also understands how to get things done in the county. We want roads cleaned when snow falls and garbage picked up and sewer lines to work. So it'd be important to have somebody with that experience. Couple of quick things, as I know a lot of this stuff's been talked about, but in 2026, an MOU is going to come due with the federal an MOU is going to come due with the federal government. It says that we must provide workforce or affordable housing in certain areas outside of the Urkel. If we do not live up to that, the fines will destroy the county's budget. As a businessperson and a banker in our community, I feel like I need to speak on behalf of the business community. One of the largest challenges we have in our community to find employees is the ability to find workforce housing or affordable housing. The average price of a new townhome in Baltimore County is close to $500,000. The average household income in Baltimore County is roughly $100,000. You're allowed or able, as a banker, we are allowed to finance around four times your household income. So, the average person in our community can't afford to buy a new townhome. So, the average teacher in Baltimore County makes roughly $60,000. The average police officer makes around $70,000 or $80,000. Those individuals are not going to be able to buy a townhome and live in our community. With that, I'll just end it. I want people to think about that when they're sitting down to make decisions. Do we want police officers and firefighters and librarians? $39,000 a year can't buy a townhome in our community. Do you want them to be able to live here? Do we want those type of people in our community? I say yes to that, and I hope you guys say yes to that too and think about that when you make your decisions. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. You could also put council members in that category too, because we're in that same range.
Same range. I want you to be able to live in our community also. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the County Council. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Baltimore County. My name is Tim Hodge, and I'm a business attorney who represents many county businesses, and I have lived in Baltimore County for over 20 years. It is rare for me to speak publicly about county politics, but this decision is critical for the next two years. The next county executive you choose should have knowledge and experience in at least the following five areas. Fighting crime, particularly juvenile crime. Development is number two, particularly smart development with an emphasis on redevelopment. Education, which is one of the key factors to a great place to live and work. Four, fiscal responsibility. We need a county executive that can manage the budget and maintain our excellent financial position as a county. Five, and I think this is an important one too, the next county executive should be a known quantity, not just in Annapolis, but someone the citizens across the county already know and respect as being competent and able to do the job. In my mind, there's only one, maybe two candidates that are qualified in these five areas, and only one is known countywide and ran for office countywide. We cannot afford to make a mistake here. The next two years are critical for our county. In the last election for county executive, your most qualified and known candidate for interim county executive lost the primary election by only seven votes, 17 after a recount. In closing, you should choose a county executive that understands all facets of the county and all geographical areas of the county, and who has broad support, as we've heard tonight from the Republicans, from both Democrats and Republican citizens, whether it be on the East Side, whether it be in Pikesville, whether it be in Hunt Valley, Cockeysville, Towson, or other areas. And I believe that person is but one person that you had before you out of the candidates this evening. I wish you the best of luck in making the right decision, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Ms. Bel Castro, next speakers, please.
Our next speakers are Earl Pratt, followed by Connor Pratt, who are both in person.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Earl Pratt. I'm a business executive. I've been CFO, COO, and CEO of a number of companies in the area, including working with Sylvan Learning for many years, and I'm now president of an accounting firm that's just invested over $1 million in a business in Parkton, Maryland to invest in the county. We moved to the county from the city 13 years ago, where Towson residents, we came here to put our kids in public school. We're both from New York. We're public school people, and we moved from the city so we could go to the great public schools of Baltimore County, certainly an incredibly important thing. But as a business executive, especially to consumers, at the end consumers yet for education and for accounting services, we always talk about listening to the voice of the customer. So, this is a rare opportunity for Baltimore County to be able to have a time where they could have a different leader who will be here, who will not run again for the office, to be someone who could be that voice of the customer for the people, to relay what the people want and need from the county. I believe that that kind of person needs to be able to hit the ground running quickly, however, because it is only two years. So, this is somebody who has a track record of representing different constituencies in a non-governmental NGO-type level to make change in the county and to be able to work quickly with leadership in the county. And I would say that as a parent of, again, two kids, who one went to Carver as a graduate, one who was a sophomore in Towson High School, who you'll hear about in about one minute, I'm very happy to be a Baltimore County resident, and I'd love to see that voice of the customer come through to the government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Go Carver Wildcats.
Next is Connor Pratt, followed by Danielle Smith, who is on virtually.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Connor Pratt. I'm a sophomore at Towson High School, and I'm a member of the Towson High School Law and Public Policy Program. I also play varsity soccer and am a member of a few clubs, such as the Be More Club, which creates meals and donate some to food shelters for the homeless. This year, at Towson High School, water drugs were placed in each classroom for kids to be able to drink out of, as opposed to faulty fountains that don't work. Small things like these have been advocated for by many and make the schools better places, but there's still a lot of work to do. I can't express how extremely disappointing it is to have to go to the bathroom and have the sink or toilet not work. With that in mind, I believe I can speak for my peers in asking the council to support a candidate who cares deeply about the education of our students and is deeply knowledgeable about county schools, and will dedicate themselves to making our schools better places. I can also say that it seems especially important to have the council choose a candidate that we as students can look up to as a role model, someone with energy, a vision, and a demonstrated record of public service and community advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Go Generals. Good hand. Nice to have young people here. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, our next speakers.
Yes, Ms. Danielle Smith is on. You begin your testimony, Ms. Smith.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. My name is Danielle Smith, and I've lived in Baltimore County for over 40 years. I would like to first start off by saying thank you to all of you for your service to our county, and happy holidays to you all. I would love for the next interim, for the next interim county executive to play more of a major role in having a more personable relationship with the Baltimore County community. As you all know, we are a very diverse community, and the old cliche in my community of having a seat at the table is imperative and vital to having equity and equality at every level. With that being said, I suggest that the county implement an office that will solely be responsible for having liaisons who will solely be responsible for reaching out to the Baltimore County communities via their HOAs, their clubs, their organizations, and community leadership that looks like the entire community, with an emphasis also on our minority organizations. This will be essential in knowing that the real true issues and concerns are, as well as complaints, that the Baltimore County residents may have, may or may not have. Most of these organizations have monthly meetings, and I suggest that the department meet quarterly, meeting the Baltimore County Executive Department with these liaisons. Have a monthly, have a quarterly meeting with these individuals to understand what is going on, as well as share what is actually happening with the Baltimore County Department as well. We also need the county to be more cognizant of how they disseminate information of individuals within the county. Although some may be shocked, there are a large number of individuals who do not use Facebook or any type of social media for a host of reasons. With that being said, there has to be more avenues, better avenues or ways to notify the community of what is going on. Also, having meetings without adequate notification and giving individuals time to be able to ask for their place of business where they work at, or those who have to drop off their kids or grandkids in the morning, places more of a task on them, and it is harder for them to be able to participate and have their voices heard. Some of them have to go through a process in order to be able to take off. Lastly, regarding education, we need to have more options regarding the CTE courses, especially on the northwest corridor of Baltimore County. While the cosmetology and hospitality are aspirations for some, we all know that HVAC and automotive jobs are very lucrative as well. Our students deserve to have the ability to obtain all the skills that are offered within the Baltimore County school system. It is while we know that students, and not just students, but individuals, period, do better when they see individuals in leadership roles who look like them because they know that there's a greater chance of having their true needs met, and that they are listened to, and that they are receiving quality and equitable services. I pray that the interim county executive comes in with the understanding of his or her role is to serve the entire community, not just their friends, colleagues, or those who will ensure that they get to their next plan, position, or assignment. It is my suggestion that those who are responsible for this election select someone who has integrity first and foremost. It's also essential that you look at their experience, especially in education and law enforcement, and consider their prior positions and knowing that they are prepared day one. You can tell a passionate, empathetic, and compassionate individual, in most cases, by the company that he or she keeps and those whom they surround themselves with. For too long, we have had individuals who are self-serving and use their minions to control Baltimore County via planned appointments. The community needs to have a true worker bee who is their ally and not a strategic plan, and a strategic plan, and not a strategic plan to the next level. They need to earn that spot. Please do your due diligence and select someone with the quality, with that quality, to also have a heart and passion for his or her community and not for the powers that be. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Maureen Wembui. Thank you. Who is here in person, followed by Robert Birch.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Ms. Wembui.
So, first off, I want to recognize Mr. Chair. I sent an email yesterday, and your chief of staff responded, so I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, but I'm not surprised. He's quick.
No, it speaks a lot, so I just want to say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So, I'm just going to read the email that I sent, because I'm not sure if everybody else read the email. So, I'm going to start by saying, "I'm writing to express my strong support for expanding essential services and resources for the immigrant communities in Baltimore County. Immigrant residents contribute significantly to the vibrancy and prosperity of our county, and it is imperative that we continue to prioritize policies that support their success and inclusion. As you consider the selection of a new county executive, I urge you to prioritize a candidate who values diversity and inclusion and is committed to strengthening the work of the Baltimore County Immigrant Affairs Team. It is crucial that we select a leader who will actively support initiatives to designate Baltimore County as a welcoming county, a place where all residents, regardless of their background, feel valued and empowered. Baltimore County residents request for representation and accessibility from this leader, someone who understands the lived experiences of the county's diverse population, including immigrants, minority groups, and economically disadvantaged communities. Additionally, I strongly oppose any potential support for the 287G program in Baltimore County. This program undermines trust between immigrant communities and the law enforcement, jeopardizing public safety, and eroding the sense of belonging that is essential for all residents. I appreciate the council's dedication to fostering a community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. I hope you consider these priorities as you deliberate on the leadership and direction of our county. Thank you to your attention to this matter. Thank you."
Ms. Wembui.
Our next speaker is Robert Birch, followed by Sheri Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Baltimore County Council. My name is Rob Birch. I am a 57-year-old resident of Baltimore County my whole life. I'm the proud father of an Eagle Scout and the proud husband of an immigrant who comes from the deep south, from Peru, who I wish you could be here with me tonight. She is someone who, like the previous speaker, has realized the American dream with commitment and hard work. My family and I have been Towson residents since 1999, and I've lived all but five of my 57 years in Baltimore. I'm here this evening to share some thoughts about which of the 12 candidates the county council should appoint to succeed, county executives, Olshesky, and why, but I won't name names. Each of the respected candidates has made significant contributions to their communities and undoubtedly loves Baltimore County, Maryland, and the United States as much as many of us here this evening. The task of voting for a successor to county executive Olshesky cannot be easy, especially when we take into account the unique talents each of the candidates brings to the table. However, if the county council bases its selections strictly on experience and qualifications, one of the candidates rises to the top of the list. In the words of County Councilman Jones, "I am certainly looking for someone who's capable of taking over on day one because the job is too important for someone to try to figure out." I agree. In my view, it's the candidate with the most successful and transferable experience in both business and in politics that's best suited to lead Baltimore County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Sheri Miller, followed by Nicholas Stewart.
Shorty. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Sheri Miller, and I live in Hunt Valley. I believe that taxpaying citizens of Baltimore County deserve and need a county executive who is going to stand up for their needs and not be motivated by other political aspirations. A leader who has done years of work in public service and shown that they can reach across the aisles to get things done in Maryland. The citizens of Baltimore County need a county executive who won't allow Baltimore County to be an extension of Baltimore City, especially when it comes to crime and public safety. We need a county executive who will not play favorites, that will be bipartisan and who would put Republicans also in their administration. We need a county executive who will protect open space and put more police on the streets without raising taxes. The next county executive needs to be clear and measured in their decision-making and will hit the ground running to do the work for the citizens of Baltimore County. I was born and raised in Baltimore County, went to Notre Dame Preparatory School, and Western Maryland College. I raised two children and spent most of my life working as a designer here in Baltimore County. I also serve on numerous boards. I also agree with Mr. Schellenberger in his decision, and I think the best candidate for your consideration would be initials JB. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Stewart, followed by Marie Laporte, who is on virtually.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Nick Stewart. I am the co-founder of a good governance advocacy group called We the People, Baltimore County. I also have four kids, young kids, so I'm fully vested in the outcomes of your decision and what happens in our future. As you may know, I recently published an op-ed in the Baltimore Sun on this specific issue, this interim appointment. At the time, I shared that the stakes are extraordinarily high, and that remains the case, if not more so, given the change in federal policy that's coming for an economy like ours, which is fairly dependent upon federal government spending. So, most immediately, as has been shared tonight, we are facing some real budgetary challenges and choices in the future here. This is a confluence of a series of events, as we know, but includes implementation of blueprints without Blueprint without a reliable funding stream. It includes increasing costs for pension and retiree healthcare obligations, the exhaustion of federal grants associated with pandemic, and of course, the continued decrease of the taxable value of commercial property. So the choices we make right now will determine whether we have the platform and really whether we have the stability to solve for the bigger challenges, policy challenges, that we're going to be facing that have led to the first population loss in Baltimore County in over 100 years. That's the housing crisis, of course, it's struggling communities that need investment. We think about Lutherville Station and Liberty Road and so forth, and it's about finding political will to support Blueprint. So what I'm trying to say is this, against this backdrop, we need far more than a caretaker. We need an advocate who understands and has been inside and outside of government, someone who can bring diverse stakeholders together and who can make tough decisions about our county and its future. The reality is this, progress is like a flywheel. It will spin faster and faster and has done so under the county executive's administration. But if we let it go, it will take time to restart, and we don't have that time. We have to solve problems now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Our next speaker is Marie Laporte, who is on virtually, followed by Jesse Jaeger, who is here in person. Ms. Laporte, you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide input to the qualifications for a new county executive. My name is Marie Laporte. I'm speaking on behalf of the Greater Baltimore Group of the Sierra Club. While there are many important skills and abilities for a new county executive, our county is facing an unprecedented challenge from climate change. And now more than ever, we need someone who has the experience with and knowledge of environmental issues and the political will to act. The Mid-Atlantic coast is the second most vulnerable area in the country for rising sea levels, and Baltimore County's 200 miles of coastline is already showing signs of land loss and vulnerabilities due to weather. Some of those vulnerabilities include flooding exacerbated by inadequate stormwater management. The lessons of Elicott City should be heated here as well. We need to improve our infrastructure and work towards reducing our greenhouse gas emissions in many ways, including building better mass transportation and building more energy-efficient buildings that don't rely on fossil fuels. Our growing heat islands, which impact our health, necessitate better protections for our existing trees and planting new ones to cool us and clean our air. And our once quiet, peaceful county has grown denser with more congestion and development, and the growing noise pollution is making life less livable here. County residents should, would also be surprised to learn that our county has an F score in air quality from the American Lung Association and that we fail to meet mandatory federal air quality standards. This significantly affects the health of children, seniors, and anyone without health, with health issues, but ultimately, it affects us all. The next county executive must take an active approach to the many environmental issues facing our county if we're going to continue to be a desirable place to live and work. Thank you. And just as a reminder to everyone who follows, please abide by the time limit because there are many people who are coming to be frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laporte. You're right on time. And congratulations, Ms. Jaeger. You are speaker number 50, number 50.
Good evening. I'm Jesse Jaeger. In the importance of time, I'm just going to keep it to my most important thing because I do agree, I think everything spoken about tonight is very important. However, I believe that education is the foundation of our community, and we need someone who has a track record of fearlessly and fervently advocating for all students in the county. We need someone who will push for renovating and building new schools, someone who already has proven that they are capable of bridging between county government and Baltimore County public schools. We need someone who has been a part of the public school system and who has already exhibited the dedication and deep understanding of what the true needs are in our county's public schools. Someone who already has stepped forward more times than most to mobilize communities to speak up for what they need, such as addressing severe overcrowding. We need a candidate who will put education at the forefront of all development and growth. We need a candidate who understands that public education is more than just reading and math. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Okay, speaker number 51, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Danielle Singley, who is online. Ms. Singley, you may begin your testimony.
Is it my turn?
Yes, Ms. Singley, you're on.
Well, so I didn't hear you. I'm so sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'm Danielle Singley, and I'm a district one resident. So my testimony tonight will be fairly quick with regards to the county executive qualification. I agree with what the county executive and Patty Nichols said earlier tonight. As someone who worked for the county for 12 years, my last, I worked there up until December 2023, I do think it is really important that the person who does assume the position has county experience because the learning curve in that role is extremely steep, and it can be very stressful for the employees and for the leadership to have to, you know, have to keep going through cycles of, in which, you know, inexperience really shows. I do think that this new county executive, I would prefer someone who prioritizes infrastructure and the economy, also mentioned earlier on the call, and really moves away from this reactionary approach that I feel this current administration has kind of taken on more, you know, in terms of really addressing issues proactively with regards to code enforcement and zoning and, you know, illegal dumping, all the different quality of life issues that we typically all deal with throughout Baltimore County. As someone who lives down in the Woodlawn, Catonsville area, I agree with many of the speakers tonight who've referenced the difficulty, you know, difficulty it is to get information down to those lower west and east side parts of the county. So out of respect for time, I will end my comments here, but I just really think that it's important that the person who comes in does have Baltimore County government experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singley. Okay, speaker number 52.
Our next speaker is Eric Rockel, who is here in person, followed by Chuck Franklin, who is no longer on. I just wanted to note that Mr. Franklin reached out in the chat. He sent a written testimony. He had to leave the meeting, so followed by him. It will be Jeffrey Carlin, who is online. Mr. Rockel, I'm sorry, you may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I think the next county executive is a person that's going to need fiscal restraint. We obviously are faced with massive state budget deficits. We're going to see declines in federal government grants to the states and localities. So having someone that practices fiscal restraint is very important. Now, that can be done compassionately by an active county executive who reaches out to all those different constituencies where reductions or just status quo funding is put in place. And I've seen it by other county executives. In my time in county service, I saw executives that only went out for ribbon cuttings and liked to stay on the mezzanine floor, and I've seen other county executives that were very proactive in outreach to the communities and that sort of thing, and that's what we need. We can help rectify the lean times that we're going to be facing by having a county executive that emphasizes economic development as well. You've heard a speaker already mention manufacturing, life sciences, tech, spending, all those sorts of industries can help lift the county's revenues and, and help keep things moving. Finally, I'd like to hope that the next county executive will really have a spirit of community conservation. We had an agency here in the county back in the 80s and 90s called the Office of Community Conservation led by tireless director named Mary Harvey, and the county executive should have that same sort of energy towards making our communities better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockel. Okay, speaker number 53, Ms. Bel Castro.
I'm hoping I select the correct person. Some people are on the meeting with just their first name. The next speaker is Jeffrey Carlin, and I'm hoping that this is the correct Jeff. Mr. Carlin?
If not, we have a Jeff over here. Okay, Jeff?
I do not have a Jeffrey online. I only have a Jeff, which did not respond.
Ms. Bel Castro, could we just go with Mr. Budnitz? Jeff, he's a Jeff.
That is at your discretion, Chairman.
Come on up, Jeff. While we're on Jeffs. Let's give Mr. Budnitz a hand.
Normally, when I'm in front of you, it's in my volunteer life, in my volunteer capacity. But I want to be clear, what funds that life is my career in finance and accounting. I've been a resident for 57 years, three months, and 17 days, and I measure things frequently in finite time. This two years is not a placeholder. I'm very aware respectfully that several of you want to run for county exec, possibly someone also wants to run for senate. Everybody has aspirations, and I think that's great, and I'm not criticizing any of that. But when you make this decision, you also have to make the decision that what you want to inherit. And when I look at two years and the support DeAndrea Walker and Kevin Reed need, and the fact that I very much share Tom Cork's concerns, and when I look at Rasmussen's comments and others, I think it's very important to have a person that can come in, have prior county experience, possibly in several agencies, and get up to speed quickly. Because the one thing that we do not have is time. When I look at part of my graduate work with the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation, or when I look at other municipal bond underwriting criteria, I'm very concerned about our future cost of borrowing. I look at our capital infrastructure. I've been to all of your town halls repeatedly. The one thing that people want are things that cost money. And the issue is, we need to do economic development, manage costs, part of that management of costs is going to be the cost of borrowing. So again, I think it's really critical that we look who we pick for the next two years. The other comment I would make, possibly a diversity choice. I think the county has become very diverse. I think that that has been reflective in the demand of additional council districts. I'm not going to sit here and give people's initials, no disrespect to JB, lovely guy, but I think that we really have to look at the big picture here. So that's my time.
Thank you. Jeff? Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Allison Jensen, followed by Christine Lawler, who is on virtually.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Allison Jensen. I was born and raised in Baltimore County, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I believe the attributes required to be an effective county executive are the ability to entertain a bipartisan agenda while remaining fiscally conservative, to speak from the heart and treat everyone fairly inequitably. My preferred candidate has proven his devotion to a bipartisan agenda. He's been visible in the county, and I believe is the best person to continue that personal connection to the Baltimore County constituents. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Lawler, followed by Michael Lawler, who is on virtually. Ms. Lawler, you may begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
And Mike Lawler will not be joining us, so you won't have to worry about him as the next speaker.
Okay, thank you.
All right, my name is Christine Lawler. I live in Towson, and I am a registered Democrat. As a Democrat, I voted for Larry Hogan both times that he ran for governor and have supported David Marks financially and have worked with him on various community projects. I do not follow the party line. I'll follow what I think is right and what is in the best interest of the citizens of Baltimore County. To me, this is the most important trait that I want in a county executive. I want someone who has a proven record to not think along party lines, but to do what is right. I also want someone who has legislative experience and has consistently had the support of the citizens of Baltimore County. It is important that this individual be fiscally responsible and have experience not only in governing, but also in the nuances of managing a business, someone who is able to balance priorities and produce results that matter. This individual must be able to build coalitions, to reach across the aisle, to listen to all sides of an issue, and make the right decision. They need to sort through complex issues and be able to work with all the affected parties to agree on a solution that is not aligned with a particular party, but instead meets the needs of those involved. And with that, I will leave you, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawler. Ms. Bel Castro, speaker number 57.
Our next speaker is Linda Dorsey Walker, followed by Gloria Kelly. Ms. Walker is, Ms. Dorsey Walker is online.
Okay. Hello again, Ms. Dorsey Walker.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Linda Dorsey Walker. I have been elected for 30 years in Baltimore County. Thank you for this important opportunity to speak about the qualities needed in the next county executive. I care very much about character, victims' rights, and especially violence against women. I request that every candidate be carefully and fully vetted. If during the vetting process it is discovered that one or more of the candidates may have in the past willingly participated in hushing up or covering up the gang sexual assault of a young girl, I want that individual removed from any further consideration as a possible Baltimore County executive. I ask that you please fully vet every Baltimore County executive candidate by directly asking each one whether he or she has ever participated in such a cover-up or been accused of assisting with such a hush-up. Then follow up by doing your due diligence as county council members. I have nothing further to say on that topic, but I would say that if you cannot agree upon one candidate, you might consider at that point leaving a very competent interim CE, who is the current county administrator, in place at that point for the balance of the two years. She would be an excellent diversity choice from the perspective of both women and minorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey Walker. Ms. Bel Castro, speaker number 58.
Next speaker is Gloria Kelly, followed by Bill Jones.
My name is Gloria Kelly, and I live in Nottingham. I would like to say for the most part that this is too important a job for somebody that needs a learning curve. We have to have somebody that can hit the ground running. As previous people have said, they need to have the support of and connections for federal and state people also, and I feel like that Senator Klosmeyer would be the best person for this job, particularly because I feel that she has the pulse of, her pulse on people of Baltimore County. But the most important thing is that the person that gets this job needs to be responsive to their constituents in a timely manner. In the past, I have had many dealings with the county council, not with just my councilman, but several councilmen, and they have been very responsive. I can't say the same for the present county executive. However, I think that this person needs to be someone that knows the state, and in my opinion, Senator Klosmeyer has her pulse on the county.
I'm going to ask you, everyone else has been really respectful in terms of identifying, not identifying candidate, but staying on specific qualifications.
Oh, sorry, sorry. But I think that also that the, this person needs to be, needs needs to be responsive, like, to the community associations. And if they're invited and they can possibly make it, I think there should also be a response as well as, as there is from the county council, who has been very involved in the community associations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Mr. Jones, good to see you.
Good to see you. Chair Petoka, members of the Baltimore County Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Bill Jones. I'm the former president and CEO of the Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore and former advisor to county executive Jim Smith. In my opinion, the most important quality of the new county executive would be that he or she hit the ground running. In order to do this, in my opinion, the selectees should exhibit some of these attributes. Experience working on projects in each of the seven districts of Baltimore County. Experience working in Baltimore County government, including public schools. Understanding the important role Baltimore County plays in the greater Baltimore region, including but not limited to economic development, workforce development, and the arts and sciences. Ability to work collaboratively with neighboring jurisdictions and have a strong working relationship with the state of Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you for your brevity. There's something to be said about brevity, isn't there? Okay, number 60.
Our next speaker is Robin Campbell, who is on virtually, followed by Paola Sansor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, great. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. I just want to say that the county council is legally obligated to appoint a Democrat. It is not, however, obligated to appoint a machine Democrat. And I say this as a lifelong Democrat. I urge the county to choose somebody who is not too partisan. What we need, first of all, is someone who has good relations with all sitting members of the council, regardless of party affiliation. Since the interim county executive not, will not be elected, we also need someone who will be seen as legitimate in the eyes of Baltimore County residents. That means someone with an established record of advocacy on behalf of a large number of people. A longtime advocate for improving Baltimore County public schools would be ideal, not only because that person will have already moved, served more than 110,000 students and their families, but also because that person will already know enough about BCPS to ensure that its 2.58 billion annual budget, more than half the county's overall budget, will be well managed over the next two years. We also need an interim county executive who stands ready to see the construction finally begin on the New Delaney High School, something that is long overdue. The other thing is, I just think that we really need to be focused on long-term growth for this county. And that means not only education, but actual economic development, other than development of housing. It feels like the only economic development that happens in this county these days is new housing construction. And while that's important, we really need someone who will focus on building businesses in this county and actually building real jobs that can support people and support families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro, number 61.
Our next speaker is Paola Sansor, by, excuse me, Winnie Carpenter to follow.
Hello. Hello, my name is Dr. Paola Sansor. I am a child psychiatrist who is practicing here in Baltimore County, and I've been living here for over 40 years. Thank you for giving me this opportunity today. Chair Petoka and Councilman Young, I appreciate the prompt responses to my email from yesterday. I'd briefly like to share that what I believe is that the incoming interim executive will have a strong intimate understanding of the perspectives of our immigrant families. I myself am an immigrant. I am the daughter of two immigrants. My husband is the son of two immigrants, and we have two children. Someone who knows our perspective, who can understand our challenges, especially in this predominant, prominent population in Baltimore County. I would also favor to have someone who has a fresh perspective, someone who is engaging and understands the communities of all backgrounds, someone who has worked tirelessly as a volunteer and truly is engaged with, with all of us in the day-to-day lives. Lastly, this person ideally will have a strong business acumen, someone who has a strong understanding of working with the budget and making a, making their decisions based on evidence and not biases. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you. My name is Winnie Carpenter, and I have been in Baltimore County for over 40 years. I currently live in Eloquent City, Baltimore County. I've spent nearly 20 years with FEMA assisting victims impacted by disasters. It is critical that any leader of Baltimore County consider the catastrophic flood risk to our neighborhoods, with specific attention not only for new development in floodplains, but for localized flood-risk areas that have sewer overflows and where drainage systems are overwhelmed, affecting our streets, our homes, and our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Okay, we're at speaker number 63. Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker is Samir Korkor, followed by Tavon Elsezi-Yang.
Hello. Thank you for everyone's time. I'm going to really try to be brief. My name is Samir Korkor. I am an attorney. I'm a former federal prosecutor. My wife is also an attorney. We live in Lutherville, in the same neighborhood where my wife grew up. We have three kids, and we're proud residents. There's some key characteristics I want to mention. We would like to see someone who understands small businesses and who understands revenue generation for the county in the coming years. Someone with a, we also want to see someone with a strong energy and a history of service to schools, libraries, and to this community. And finally, we'd like to see someone who is diverse to make some history and, and who has experience with immigrant, immigrant groups. I'll go into just a tiny bit of detail on these points. With regard to small businesses, they are the backbone of a strong economy. The next Baltimore County executive should, should be a strong advocate for small businesses and hopefully have firsthand experience running a small business so the person is able to continue to create an environment where entrepreneurship can thrive and ensure the county remains a great place to do business. With regard to the second point, the job needs someone who brings high energy and commitment to serving the community. Someone who, when COVID strikes, helps organize distribution of resources during such a time of crisis. Someone who consistently has worked to strengthen Baltimore County by bringing neighbors together and helping to ensure everyone has what they need to succeed. Finally, having someone with the unique kind of diverse, diversity experience would allow the person to have a unique ability to bridge cultural and community gaps and ensure that every voice is heard and represented. And I think that's particularly important coming into the coming year in terms of immigrants and, and their integration in Baltimore County.
Thank you, Mr. Korkor. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Next speaker is Tavon Elsezi-Yang, followed by Shazia Shah.
Hey, Ms. Elsezi-Yang.
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Tavon Elsezi-Yang. I am a resident of District 1 in the Windsor Mill area. And as it pertains to our next county executive, I, I just want to say, I think the most important characteristic and qualification is integrity. I hope that you all look at that as a quality. And I also think that the, the county has before it a great opportunity, and I heard someone else says, say this, a great opportunity to choose a non-establishment candidate. We have the opportunity to choose someone who is also diverse and an independent thinker, independent operator. And I'm not speaking in term of party, but someone is open to walk across, work across the aisles, that is. Someone who is focused on equalizing resources and attention on development and redevelopment throughout the entirety of the county. Other focus, of course, is I agree with others in education, public safety, public infrastructure and investment. A human servant, having a love for community and people. Someone who has had a background and a track record of working in the community. And I will begin to wrap up here. Diversity isn't just a buzzword. It's a powerful tool that strengthens our community. Today, I'll focus on three areas where diversity impacts us all positively. And that is economic growth, social unity, and representation in decision-making. Diversity will not give room to polarization. Then I'll say that I hope, as you prepare, that you would think about this in your preparation, that we need someone who cares about people as well as our future. Our future requires a leader who will bring progress, prosperity, as well as promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're at speaker 65. Ms. Bel Castro.
I cannot locate Ms. Shaw online, so I'm going to go to the next speaker, who is Kelly Emerson, followed by Carolyn Black Sotier, who is on virtually.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for your service and for the opportunity to be here today. It's really a wonderful thing to see a transparent democracy in action. Thank you. A native New Yorker, I've been living in Baltimore for 30 years or more. I am a proud Parkville resident currently. During this time, I've come to love Baltimore deeply, and I'm proud and pleased to send my children to Baltimore County schools. It's also been a privilege, a great privilege, to serve as a council member at the Cromwell Valley Park Council. What's important to me as a citizen and a parent? Education, food security, community. We're all in this together, and Baltimore County residents deserve a county executive who knows that. What's important to me as a resident and a property owner? That we have a candidate, a community, a county executive with a record of consistent advocacy and service to Baltimore County citizens. A county executive with a sincere commitment, a sincere commitment to making Baltimore a better place. A county executive with a deep knowledge of local politics and budgetary needs. A county executive who can facilitate and coordinate multi-effort, multi-agency efforts to find creative solutions to pressing fiscal, environmental, and societal problems. An executive who has an appreciation not only of what can be achieved through volunteerism, but also what can truly be accomplished through the cooperation of private and public sector. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly. Our next speaker is Carolyn Black Sotier, followed by Diana Bergman.
Hi. Listen, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I, I live in District 3. My name is Carolyn Black Sotier, and I'd like to quickly thank Councilman Catch for his service to the state, to the county, and more specifically to his constituents in District 3. My husband and, Michael Sotier and I are business owners in Catonsville, and we appreciate Councilman Young's work in District 1. So there have been many insightful recommendations this evening. I don't want to be redundant, but I agree with them. An individual who can hit the ground running, sorry for the cliche. Someone who is familiar with all of Baltimore County, who has executive management experience, who is experienced in working with large budgets, and also experienced with the public schools. We've heard so much about the importance of education and the concern for, of so many residents. So someone who really understands the schools. I did note, however, there has been little, if any, mention, except for dear Bill Jones, my friend, and Will Anderson, about the arts and culture. So just to give you a little background, for 18 years, I've been a member of the Baltimore County Commission on Arts and Sciences, and I currently serve as its chair. We actually had a meeting this evening. And I have witnessed firsthand, the arts can bring people together from diverse backgrounds. They elevate our spirits. And also, I've witnessed how the arts can serve as a powerful economic driver. And just two examples would be the Catonsville Arts and Entertainment District, and now the Piceville Armory are just, again, as I said, two examples. There are many countywide. So I and my fellow Commissioner Vice Chair, Isaac Manjo, are hoping and asking that you pick an interim CE who understands and respects and will use the arts to inspire the county as a wonderful place to live, to work, and to play. Quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergman. Ms. Bel Castro, speaker number, and look, speaker number 67 approaches.
Diana Bergman, followed by Annette Karanja, who is on virtually.
Okay, hello, Diana.
Hello, guys. What's going on? So, I was gone for three years.
And apparently, you're back.
I'm back. Once a Viking, always a Viking. I love Lanes Down. Three years I was gone. Two years, I got the opportunity to serve as a commissioner for the city in one of the richest counties in the state of California, Monterey County. So I've been listening to everybody come to speak, and one thing that I'm concerned about, that I haven't heard, is that the next county executive, the interim county executive, it is key that that individual is a quick learner. Because you're going to need to tap into federal funds, okay? The state is currently in a deficit, and the county employees and your aides that are sitting here, you need to make sure that that interim county, county executive has a strong team. Why? Because there's a lot of federal grants that help improve things like resurfacing road projects. It helps and works. There's a lot of red tape, but there's grant available for urban housing development when you're looking at certain cities and populations that need that infrastructure. The funding is there. You just got to have the people to dig for it and find it and get those commissioners out there to follow the process. You're going to need every single penny. You can't leave a single penny behind. So you want to make a decision, and I'm not going to name drop, because the last time I was here for an interim county executive, when the late Kevin Cabinetts was here, I did name drop. And the council served, heard that name drop, and we got Don Moller. I was happy with that. But I don't think that's, we're in the same situation of what's going on now, okay? Every penny counts. People are going to get upset if they don't get their needs met. And we have a lot of needs. We need to bring that bridge back. Because I'm working five days a week in Baltimore County. An hour and a half commute for me, and I'm taking the back roads. So I know Julian Jones, your roads, they need to be reserved, Izzy, too, because I'm driving through you. David Marks, Wade Cash, I'm riding through all those country roads that need to be expanded. Because there will be a two-hour commute in the morning for me to get to work to Towson. So thank you, guys. Glad to see you again, and best of luck. Big, big decision you guys have to make. Bye.
Our next speaker is Annette Karanja, who is on virtually, followed by Sharonda Hoffman, who is also on virtually.
Hello, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to address you all. I hope you can all hear me.
We can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. I just wanted to say that for this county executive that is coming up, that we need to have somebody who is going to continue the work that has been done and maintain the relationships that have already been established. I know that there are many community members who feel the shock of whenever a transition happens, not being able to connect with leadership when it comes to ongoing projects. Right now, the community center that I am associated with has a program that is going on to help people age in place and in dignity. And that requires us to get grant funding. And we want to make sure that projects like that, which have been started under Johnny And we want to make sure that projects like that, which have been started under Johnny Oh, continue under the next person. I also want to acknowledge the fact that in order for our businesses to thrive, we have to have good relationships with the county and that we are aware of the grants that are available and the opportunities that are there and the partnerships that can be made. That's something that requires businesses to have accessibility to the leadership. And the next county executive has to be accessible when it comes to that so that we can support our small businesses. The last point I want to make is about housing. I personally have lived in Baltimore County for a majority of my life, and one of the things that is really difficult for some of my peers, including, you know, myself, is just being priced out of the neighborhoods that we've grown up in and the places that we've gone to high school. And that's because of favoritism towards developers and planning that doesn't take into account the diversity of the economic status of the citizens that are here. And that's something that really does need to be addressed, especially if the next two years are going to be strenuous, given the change on the federal level. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, speaker number 69, Ms. Bel Castro, who is that?
Our next speaker is Sharonda Hoffman, who is on virtually, followed by our final speaker this evening, Rob Minch.
Good evening again. This is Sharonda Hoffman from Essex in District Seven. I have already sent in my comments, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit. One of the things I think is very important is to have someone who is used to working with Democrats and Republicans. I think you can look at people who have already have some legislative experience in purple areas. Being a council, I'm sorry, a county executive requires you to work with various different people, because you represent everyone. I would also want someone to consider someone who's strong on understanding housing and zoning. One of the biggest problems that the county has right now is housing, and we have to have a good understanding of what that means and have a better plan and not a strategy of spot zoning. We also should have someone who has a formal education and/or profession in knowing the avenues of government. This is not the time to have someone who has strong leadership skills, but they haven't actually proven to have the connections that we need. We are in competition, unfortunately, with every other county and the city for the precious resources of the state. So we need someone who already has an established record in Annapolis. And finally, I think that is an opportunity for this council to make history again. I am just requesting that if all things are similar, that you select a woman. A woman who has fresh perspectives, who has accountability, and a history of advocacy to the goal. And I want to thank you very much, and you have a good evening.
Ms. Hoffman, thank you for not mentioning any specific candidate, but you certainly narrowed it down. Okay, Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker.
I want to note that Mr. Minch is not the last speaker.
Okay.
Mr. Minch, you are on, and you may begin your testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been a long night, and I'm not going to keep you. I just wanted to reiterate two points. There's been a lot of good points that have been made, but the two points that I want to reiterate and emphasize are, number one, I think it's very important that the person has the experience needed to start on day one, as many other people have stated, because it's two years and there's no time to waste, number one. And number two, it's very important, in my opinion, to have someone who is an independent thinker, who is not tied to party loyalty, and is going to reach across the aisle to perfect the government and to get things done. So experience, independence, and a proven record, and I think those are the points that need to be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minch. Thank you for your brevity. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please. Speaker 71.
Our next speaker is Raymond Hile, who is here in person.
Mr. Hile.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking on behalf of the Baltimore County Green Alliance. It's a coalition of 25 environmental organizations who operate diverse programs across the county. We believe that in addition to all the personal and professional qualifications that are needed for good governance that have been mentioned tonight, an essential qualification for our next county executive is the knowledge of and a record of addressing environmental challenges facing Baltimore County. These challenges mean that a caretaker candidate is not an option. Our next county executive must know that, for instance, Baltimore County has 219 miles of tidal waterfront that are subject to extensive flooding due to sea level rise and extreme storms. Inland flooding due to increasingly extreme storm events will affect many communities and roads throughout Baltimore County, hampering access to hospitals and other essential services. Extreme storms also lead to sanitary sewer overflows in many areas of the county, and according to a 2021 engineering study, 19 of our sewage transfer stations are at risk, endangering water quality and public health. Our older areas of the county have inadequate stormwater management and inadequate sewer capacity. So continued development in those areas will only make these problems worse. And the executive should know that Baltimore County air quality has earned an F rating by the American Lung Association, and we are in serious nonattainment of federally mandated air quality standards by the Environmental Protection Agency. So this affects the health of all of our residents. And finally, the 40-year, multi-billion-dollar Chesapeake Bay program will not reach its water quality goals set for 2025. As this program revises its goals, Baltimore County must play a constructive role in restoring the Chesapeake Bay. We need a county executive who demonstrates knowledge of these issues and a record of working to address them. Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hile. Ms. Bel Castro, next speaker, please.
You'll have to bear with me, this is Penelope Howe.
Penelope, come on up.
Thank you.
I know it's been a long night, I'm tired, but thank you for giving me the opportunity, even though I was on the waitlist. My father was a Foreign Service Officer, career diplomat, and one of the things that he drilled into us is that if you have two concentric circles, right, where they meet is the sweet spot, and that's where you can push the agenda forward. And you need someone who can actually do that. Someone who is willing to cross the aisle, as many have said, but also has the integrity and the tenacity to stand by their issues and what they believe, that are willing to go to nth degree to be able to make a consensus, to be able to move forward. So that's my first thing. And then the second point is that I've watched this man, oops, man, I've watched him when...
You've narrowed it down to eight candidates.
Yeah. So anyway, when the things didn't go as planned at the last election, he volunteered for CASA, which is an organization called Court Appointed Special Advocates. I'm also a volunteer, and I'm also on the board. And I watched this guy advocate for his child ruthlessly. I mean, it was like this child had the best advocate they could possibly get, and when the funds or the things that we needed, the programs we needed to be available, and when the funds weren't there, he went and raised the money. He pushed the executive director, he pushed the board to do better, to be more fiscally responsible, to raise more money, to listen to the community and what we needed. And I think if you extrapolate that into what a county executive should be able to do, I think you have the right person. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bel Castro, Penelope, what was your last name? H O U G H. Okay.
Last speaker, I believe, Stephanie Keen.
Stephanie Keen. Okay.
Even under two minutes, I promise, I absolutely promise, because we're all tired. Good evening, chairmen and county council members. I am Stephanie Keen. I've been, for the last 27 years, I lived in West House, and I've pretty much been a Baltimore County resident my whole life. So I was given the task of people asking, say, hey, go up and talk about the qualities that would make a really good interim county executive. And I said, okay. So I sat down, I thought about it, wrote on my little pieces of paper, and I came up with a really, like, six points. Number one, they need to be intelligent. Two, really hardworking. Three, you have to be experienced, because if you only have two years, you have no time to try and catch up, to figure out what you're supposed to do. I think they have to be open with their communication, with their constituents, with other members of the council. I think being bipartisan is good, doesn't always have to be, you just have to be able to extend an olive branch and say, hey, I see your idea, I see your way, you see my way, and work it out. They also have to be able to answer the tough questions with honesty and sincerity. That's super-duper important. Be able to talk to people like they're people, not people. And green space is important, too. I wrote that down. That's pretty much all I have to say, and you now have 40 seconds left. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Have a great night.
Thank you so much. Oh, here's Whitold.
I got a confirmation number of 616, and my name was never called.
Whitold, I'm going to call your name.
Vito.
Vito.
Skvirchinsky. I live in Catonsville. My background is labor. One of the main criterion for selecting one of the candidates is that they're a Democrat. Unfortunately, some of the candidates don't act like Democrats, and in my mind, should be disqualified because of that. Two of the candidates refused to support the Democrats, the candidate for governor, who the majority of Democrats selected in a primary. That's jealous, Ben Jealous. Two candidates didn't support Ben Jealous, one actively opposed Jealous and supported Larry Hogan. You cannot have a leader, you cannot have a leader of this county who supports candidates that the voters don't want them to support. In addition, some of the candidates did not support core Democratic legislative issues such as family leave, sick leave, voting rights for ex-felons, and nondiscrimination by landlords based on the source of rental payment. One of the candidates running actually urged a Baltimore County residence to boycott Baltimore City and create economic havoc in Baltimore City. That's irresponsible. That person should not be qualified for selection. Now, what we need is a worker candidate, somebody who supports workers. So I would suggest that the following agenda should be, you should ask the candidates about the following agenda. A county minimum wage like they have in Howard County and Montgomery County that is increased by inflation on a yearly basis. Elimination of the tip worker subminimum wage. Prohibition of book bans and restrictions on free speech in schools and libraries. Continuation of the county as a sanctuary county. A living wage requirement for all county contractors. Project labor agreements for all county subsidized projects. A ban on captive audience meetings and labor union organizing drives. A graduated income tax when you can do so in 2016, so the wealthy pay a higher tax than those who aren't wealthy. A 20% of new housing development should be for affordable housing. A renter bill of rights so that renters can't be evicted if they organize tenant unions. A ban on non-compete requirements by businesses for lower-income employees. Wage transparency bill that allows workers to discuss among themselves on the shop floor what their wages are without being fired or disciplined. We need an energy policy. That means all the vehicles in the county are on a timely basis, become non-fossil fuel. We need the districts to be changed in a non-gerrymandering manner, in a nonpartisan group, changing those district lines. And finally, when there's a vacancy in the future, either of the county executive or any of the members of the county board, there should be an election of all the individuals in Baltimore County, not just of seven people.
Okay, thank you, Vito. Are there any, that was speaker number 74. Is there a speaker 75? Did anyone come here tonight with an intention to speak but did not get called upon or did not have an opportunity to speak? Okay, Mr. Levine, come on up here, Andrew Levine.
Sorry, I was late. I have twin daughters that are expecting babies any minute now, so, on the fly, so two girls at once. So those of you who know me, I'm very involved with the county, been president of the Baltimore Humane Society for around 13 years, on board of directors of other organizations. Real simple, didn't write it. One thing that was really not discussed tonight was, who's coming in with an agenda? I haven't heard that. I've heard of bringing people, they need this, they need that, but when you come into this position, you need an agenda. And there is only one person that I know that has an agenda. I know we're not going to mention names, but that person had an agenda for the county, to run for county executive at one point. And an agenda is very important, and not a matter of just filling a position. It needs an agenda, if someone has a mission to take this county to another level across the board, especially with supporting the police and crime and so on. I live in the Lutherville area, there haven't been much improvements in Lutherville in quite a while. So county police is a very important area that we need to really focus on. So anyway, agenda, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. So we've got 75 speakers, everyone has had a chance, right? So I'm just going to acknowledge a couple of folks out there. I want to first acknowledge the candidates that have been sitting here all night, and I appreciate that. I'm going to start on this side, work my way over, and if I miss anybody, please let me know. We have Barry Williams. Mr. Williams, you want to stand up and wave to everybody? We have Senator Jim Broach in the back here. We have Kathy Klausmeyer here, Senator Klausmeyer. We have Yara Shike over here. Yara, you want to say hello to everybody? And we have Pastor Gregory Dennis over here. Did I miss anyone that is in the mix? Okay. And let me also acknowledge Delegate Kathy Forbes. Give Kathy Forbes a hand. Okay, Councilman Young advises me that Tara Ebersol was here earlier, I did not see her. Okay, give her a hand. So I want to thank everyone for hanging in here. Before we close, I'm going to ask any of the colleagues if they have any comments they'd like to make at this point. Councilman Marks?
I just want to thank everyone for testifying tonight. I think we heard several common themes. We heard that you want someone as county executive who's going to get things done, and you also want someone who's going to reach across the aisle. With one notable exception, I heard from you that you do not want a partisan county executive. And three of the seven of us are Republicans. We work in a very collegial manner, and I think all of us look forward to working with the next county executive. So thank you all for who came.
Okay, with that, give yourselves a hand. Thanks, everybody, drive safely.